All right, good afternoon. 4:30, all right. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and if you'd all rise so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, after that, next item up is Wendy's pet. Ms. Stenick, the floor is yours.
Okay, this week we have a cat, and this is Midnight. Midnight was found on Malnurish with a purple collar of somebody's lost her. And we don't know how old she is because she was so underweight, but we're going to guess around three. You can, she's been in my arms like this for the last 15, 20 minutes, and I can tell you that she's very gentle. So, if anybody's interested, you can go to 211, what used to be One Rod Highway, but now it's Richard White Way. And pick up the cat at the pound.
Not yet, Chair.
Not yet?
It's still Richard White, or it's still One Rod Highway.
Oh, I tried Rich. So, come get the cat.
I guess we'll have to move to item, whatever number it is.
All right, Chair, are you still batting a thousand?
You know what, I have to check on the pit bull. Not yet. The day's not over yet. I would take it home myself, except for I have two dogs. The dog's friendly with other, with people and kids, just not with other animals, so that limits me.
And it, we've been doing this for quite a while now. I should, I did want to take a moment to point out that Ms. Stenick started this during her term on the Board of Selectmen and has continued it since her leaving this board. And thank you very much for taking that time and commitment to helping these animals find a place and making a family in Fairfield happy.
Many families.
All right, next up, we have minutes to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular meeting for October 3rd. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Kristin?
Clarification. The minutes of the Wednesday, October 3rd meeting, item number six on page three.
Yes.
Within the paragraph, it says, "Ms. Marks is requesting funding to repair four headstones." And I see her here, my understanding is there was no funding being requested from the town. I think we need to clarify that wording. The funding, as later stated in the minutes, was coming from the State Historic Preservation Office. May we, may we clarify that so that we can properly reflect that in the minutes? Is it appropriate?
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, would you please? Thank you.
We have a couple things that are all right. I think those were Hi, Melanie Marks, for the Diego Westing Road.
Do you have a copy of them?
I don't have a copy of the minutes with me, but I can clarify.
You can read them, I'll get an extra copy.
Okay.
It's this, it's this paragraph right here.
Yeah, no, what, yeah, what it should say is, "I'm not requesting money for the four headstones for the Greenfield Hill Cemetery," and that Judge Caruso has approved the person from the State Historic Preservation Office that will be doing the repairs. That's how, there's no money coming from the State Historic Preservation Office. So it should be re, just mainly that I was requesting that the stones be removed to be replaced. No funding was being applied for.
So, Mr. Assistant, Chair, may I then ask, and with the help of Ms. Marks, if we amend this to reading, Ms. Marks is not requesting funding to repair four headstones, headstones?
That funding has been covered by private.
And it sounds like that would, that's the only amendment needed here to clarify this.
Yeah.
Was there a second part? It was Judge Caruso that made the approval, not the State Historic Preservation Committee? Did I get that wrong?
No, she spoke before Parks and Rec, and Judge, I spoke before Parks and Rec and Judge Daniel Caruso. The State Historic Preservation Office has approved, that should be a separate sentence, the State Historic Preservation Office has approved the person who will repair the stones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So you want to add the word "not" in? Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Back to the minutes as amended, are before us. Any further discussion on the minutes? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jen, you have that changed. Next up, to consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting November 14th, 2012. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five on the agenda, we have a resignation from the Conservation Commission. Tisha Ferguson has resigned as an alternate. Item six, our first selectman reappointments, and these are for information only. For the Economic Development Commission, Peter Penzer, Democrat, 657 Merwin's Lane. Item B, the Conservation Commission, Catherine S. O'Donnell, 154 Blaine Street. And both were from terms November 12 to November 2017. And Parking Authority, Ron Pine, Republican, 36 High Long Road, terms 1112 through 1117. Peter, Catherine, or Ron here? Those are for information only, those are first selectman appointments. And again, as always, I want to thank these three people for signing up again to continue to serve the town in their various boards and capacities. Seven, reappointments. To hear, consider, and act upon the following reappointments. Board of Health, Jacob J. Hen, Jr., unaffiliated, 745 Stratfield Road, term 1112 through 1116. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment, I was able to talk with Sands Cleary today, who was thrilled that Mr. Hen was willing to continue and that he's been doing a wonderful job, so thank you.
Great, is Mr. Hen here? No, I realize that we have a number of folks on the appointment list here today that had trouble with this meeting and this timing during the day. Personally, I'm pretty sympathetic to that because of the hour of the day that this meeting took place. But if anyone's not comfortable and would like to reschedule, certainly we can do that if that's important.
No, we're good, thank you.
All right. Any comments from the public on Mr. Hen? Any appointment? Back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Hen. Fire Commission, Mr. Frank Chaplinsky, Democrat, 1189 Merritt Street, term November 12 through November 17. That's my understanding, Mr. Chaplinsky is also traveling at this point, unable to make it. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? I've had a chance to talk with both the Chair of the Fire Commission and the Fire Chief, Mr. Chaplinsky was put on this board about four or five months ago originally. He's been a valuable asset since then to the board, and they were both in favor of his continued service. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, any further comments? Ready to vote?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, the Flood and Erosion Control Board, Timothy DeBarrolo Mayo, a Republican, 403 Nonopage Road, term 1112 through 1117. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just to comment that this board certainly, or this commission, has become a little more relevant now, and he has a tremendous resume and brings wonderful experience to the table, so I'm happy to support his reappointment.
I believe Mr. DeBarrolo Mayo is also traveling at this point, was unable to make the meeting. Any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, Human Service Commission. Any preference we're taking, it's one at a time.
It's group.
All right. Then the Human Services Commission, Mark Andre, Democrat, 130 Lakeview Drive, term November 12 through November 16. Selma Cohen, Democrat, 375 Old Oaks Road, term 1112 through 1116. Joan Swanson, Republican, 160 Fairfield Road, term November 12 through November 16. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All three are reappointments. The Human Services Commission has been doing, I think, great work, both in terms of a survey of the seniors in town and also reviewing the work on survey of senior centers around town. I think there's a lot of room for improvement in terms of where we're going, and a lot of proposals that are coming up. So this, I think, is going to be another very active commission over the years ahead. Any further discussion from the board?
Go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to echo that. I think there, there's a lot of transition and also opportunity here, and I certainly encourage that commission to keep up the good work and continue to look into all the different things that you have been. As we think about human services, this commission certainly has purview and is largely responsible for working with the senior center, but is also our human and social services as well. So I always like to make sure we don't forget that that's, that piece of it as well.
Mr. Powell?
No.
All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now I know Selma's here, Ms. Cohen.
Marks.
Jones.
Joan, good to see you. Mr. Andre, you're back there, great. All three of you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would any one or all of you like to make any comments at this time?
We look forward to the encouragement you're offering us right now.
All right, thank you.
And picking up on it and using it.
Okay, well, thank you, and again, thank all three of you for your service, your continued service, and looking forward to some interesting times ahead. Next up, Police Commission. Again, okay, if you use a group, I guess I'll move it.
Yes, a group is fine with me.
Police Commission, Thomas Dubrowski, Democrat, 131 Fairfield Place, term November 12 through November 17. Arthur Hirsch, Republican, 1 Oak Bluff Road, term 1112 through 1117. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? I've had a chance to work with Mr. Dubrowski and Mr. Hirsch. In fact, it's, it was commented the other night at a Board of Finance meeting that since I took office as first selectman, we've had two hurricanes, one a year. Hoping to break that record next year. But I've had a chance to work with both Mr. Hirsch as chairman during Irene and Mr. Dubrowski as chairman during Sandy, and it's been a pleasure working with both, and I appreciate their leaderships and support on the Police Commission. Any further comments? Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
We are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Hirsch, I see as Mr. Dubrowski here?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch, congratulations. Any comments at this time? All right, thank you, and thank you for your continued service. Next up, Shellfish Commission. I guess I should take just a moment and point out that one of the things that happens per our charter is that a lot of the terms expire at the end of November. So that's why you see kind of a batch of things going through, and this is going to be kind of an annual event. Many of the terms that get appointed expire at the last meeting in November, so we have to then go ahead and appoint them in December. So that's what we're up to, and that's why there's so many coming through at this time. Shellfish Commission, Catherine Rayner Katropa, Republican, 1087 Bronson Road, term November 12 through November 17. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Of course.
I had occasion to speak with Ms. Rayner Katropa, and she also has a work obligation right now. But she talked about the work that they've been doing, which is exciting, and one of the things that she mentioned was that they, the commission hopes to do a clinic with families and work with folks in the community to teach them more about the shellfish and perhaps even go clamming and things like that. So they're doing a lot of important work in terms of, for the environment, but also just thought I'd put that out there since she's not here now, and we'll hear more about that in the future. So I'm happy to support her and the work they're doing.
Mr. Powell?
Yes, sir.
All right. You know, it's interesting, I remember as a kid having a chance to clam down at Sasco Beach, and it's been a few years since I did that. But with both storms, you get reeducated about what's happened to our shellfish beds and what's taking place. So, again, it's another very important board, you don't hear a lot about it, but it is part of our heritage, and I'm thrilled that we have someone willing to continue to serve in that capacity. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, tree ward. Didn't we have all the trees knocked down? Do we still need this condition? All right. Just because you said we still have more trees, Karen. Mr. Kenneth Placco, term 1112 through 1113, this is a one-year appointment. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, just a quick thank you to Ken and all, and all his team for all the work they've done in these last few weeks and last year, so there's plenty of trees in our town.
I'd just like to ask Mr. Placco a question if I could. Echo the thanks from Selectman Kylie, I couldn't agree more. You've been a busy person in your role. Just wondering if you would just talk to us about how your role fit into the storm?
I can't hear her. I will be.
I'll repeat that. Just wondering how you fit into the storm. I know we had people from UI outworking, and we had you out, we had DPW, and if you could just help the town understand your role in both the storm, but just briefly what you do day to day.
We, I was in the midst of it. As Mike indicated, when they called everybody in, I think I was the only one out there, not really realizing I could get home that night, and I was trying to find a parking lot that I could just park and be safe for the night, just in case, but I couldn't even get to Smith Richardson. But I did find my way back home, and only to find out the lights were out, and the wife had the meal going over her grill, and we wound up beaten that way, and then the lights came on for a little while, and then they went off again. But we were one of the fortunate ones where we did have lights pretty quickly that night, and they stayed on for the rest of the time. But we've been putting in 12, 14-hour days, working, coordinating with UI crews, contracting crews, moving a lot of wood. I mean, I think we moved more wood in one month than we moved probably in all year. So this is one of the biggest storms I've seen, and I think it was a well-coordinated effort on all parts.
And what's your estimate for the total number of trees at Fairfield?
For the town or for the, just the public properties? I can give you either way.
Give us both.
I'm figuring around 2,000 trees, either whole or in parts of, that were broken, split, uprooted on roadways, open space areas, parks, schoolyards, golf courses. I think we lost like 110 trees up on the Smith Richardson Golf Course by itself.
Wow.
Overall, town-
Easier to find some of my shots, though, now.
Yeah, I heard it was a real interesting play when you got up there. And overall, town, I figured probably another, you can 10 times that amount, so between 10,000 and 20,000 trees.
Wow.
So it was a lot of things happening, and hopefully we'll consider this in the future, what trees we're going to be planting back out there again, and try to help out Mother Nature a little bit.
May I follow up?
Good. Now, we've won, you know, the last year we've been recognized a number of times, both as another, here at Tree City USA.
Yes.
We had the, was it the Fairfield Garden Club?
Yes.
That planted 100 trees in one day?
Yeah. We were one of the first towns in Connecticut to receive a grant to help plant 100 American chestnut trees, something that's been extinct from Connecticut for 100 years now, since the blight came through. And with Dr. Sandy Nagastakis from the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station, who's been working on trying to get the American chestnut back into place in the national environment, she was very instrumental with this, with the American Federated Garden Clubs and their volunteers that came out and helped. Mr. Ed Jones from Conservation with putting up fencing, deer fencing around them to help preserve the trees for a little longer time till they can get established. So it was one of the most worthwhile projects I've worked on in town, and it was one of those goals that you always think about, but you never could find the time to do it or the way to do it, and the garden club pulled it all together.
Congratulations. Any further comments? Kristin?
Just to follow up, my second question was going to be about, we lost all those trees in the plan in terms of replacement, and you said hopefully, do you, are you currently working towards a plan? Is there, is it continuing on the plans that you've had in the past, or have you worked towards modification of that in terms of tree replacement and?
Right now, the Fairfield Forestry Committee is actively working on trying to get new ideas out there to get the public interested in replanting trees. The town has have a, for a number of years, a tree planting program in town whereby residents can take advantage of a partially subsidized program to help plant trees along the roadways, and that has worked for a number of years. The numbers have declined over the years, but I'm sure that was part of the economy. Hopefully this year we can start thinking about bringing those numbers back up again.
And they contact you in order to-
Just contact their office.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, very much. Thank you.
Mr. Powell, anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any comments from the public? Yes, please, if you'd come up to the microphone.
Could Joan speak up?
Sorry. I can't.
This is Melanie Marks again. I just wanted to say that I just want to let Ken know that I appreciate everything that he's done to expedite getting the trees down in the Greenfield Hill Cemetery. We've had four storms, five storms.
At least.
Probably 12 trees, and he's been very good about letting me know what the plans are, when they're coming out, when they're going to be done, and we really appreciate it. So I'm thrilled he's, he's on the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Placco.
Thank you.
Next item up, Conservation Commission appointment, Tish Ferguson, Democrat, 542 Montmorel Road, term November 12 through November 17. Tish was an alternate and has moved on to a full-time member. May I have a, oh no, it's for information only, I'm sorry. And Tish isn't here, is she? I didn't miss her. Okay. All right, next up, appointments. To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointments. The Fair TV Operational Committee, Elizabeth Hoffman, Republican, 203 Lover's Lane, term 1012 through July 13. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. I just wanted to introduce Liz Hoffman's resume a little bit to the audience. Liz could not be here today due to a work commitment, but after a relative, after a relatively lengthy search, we did come up with a candidate in Liz Hoffman, who I know and believe is going to do a great job for us on Fair TV. She brings decades of Fortune 500 corporate experience, and she has worked extensively at Disney, CBS, and ABC throughout her career, so she has a great mixture of both media experience, corporate experience, and volunteerism in our town, so I'm happy to recommend her for this committee.
Great, excellent. Kristin?
And having worked with Liz as a member of the RTM, I'm also very happy that she's willing to participate and serve in this way, and had a chance to speak with her, and I think one of the things that I have talked about here, as corny as it sounds, Fair TV needs to be fair, and she is a person who I think will, and does, listen to all sides, and I think she will be willing to vigorously engage in the issues and make a fair and balanced decision with the rest of the committee, so grateful for her service.
Very good. I've had a chance to work with Ms. Hoffman also during her tenure on the RTM, and she was always a very enthusiastic and passionate participant in the discussions, and we look forward to more of the same as she's on the Fair TV Commission. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you said Liz wasn't here, right?
Yep.
Next up, the Fire Commission. William J. Fitzpatrick III, Democrat, 58 Fairmount Terrace, term November 12 through November 17. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I've-
All right, I'll start. I've known, I've known Mr. Fitzpatrick for, I think, more years than either of us would care to admit to at this point. And he's been a valuable volunteer for the town in terms of helping out in various capacities over time, from Board of Finance to Police Commission to innumerable volunteer groups, and certainly those of you who've attended zoning meetings have seen his smiling face before the, both boards there. And again, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'm thrilled that he would sign up for another tour of duty to help out the town in the capacity on the Fire Commission.
Just, just quickly, I'd like to thank, thank you for volunteering again to serve on this board, and our paths crossed back in 1997, as you were an outgoing and I was an incoming member of the Board of Finance in 1997, I think it was, so without dating us, which I just did. I would like to thank you for your years with the service to our town.
And I would echo those as well. I think you will be a wonderful addition to that wonderful group. See the chief in the back.
All right, any comments from the public?
I would like to say I think he's a good man, too.
Ms. Minor?
Come on up.
Come on up to the microphone.
Just to say that he's a good man?
Yes.
Can't hear you.
We've got to record that for poster, you're our town historian, you have to know this stuff.
Your voice on the internet makes it official. He smiled.
Well, I do want to echo and say that Bill Fitzpatrick is a terrific guy, even though I've argued with him lots of times, and he always, when he sees me, he said, "You're here for trouble again?" I just want you to know, Bill, I think you're great.
And that was Marsha Minor. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Placco. Congratulations, Mr. [inaudible]. Did you want, counselor, did you want time for a rebuttal?
Oh, absolutely not.
All right, next up, a request for use of the town green. To here, consider and act upon a request from the Fairfield Women's Club for use of the Town Hall Green for their 31st Annual Crafts Fair Saturday, May 11, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is anyone from the Fairfield Women's Club here? All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Chairman of the Greenfield Hill Cemetery Committee. To here, consider and act upon a petition from Melanie Marks for the authority to remove, repair, restore, and reset four grave markers on the old bearing ground. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Marks, do you have a few remarks for us?
I promise, this is my last time up here. I promise. Yes. This time I'm actually requesting or petitioning four headstones that are in the old bearing ground behind the museum. The four that we have targeted, I did work with Mike Jaylee with the Fairfield History Museum. Two of them are important to the museum. He has pledged $500 to have, to go towards $1,000 that we need to get these four repaired. The two that he has requested be fixed, we're going to do first. The second, the last two, we're going to have to seek funds and try and get the rest of the money to do them. But I can assure you, my stone mason is going to repair all four and put all four back. And we'll work with me over time to get the money for the other two. I just wanted to read a little bit about the four because I think they're very interesting and I'll make this very quick. The first one is Mrs. Mary Betts. She was the daughter of John Gold Esquire of Fairfield and wife of Thaddeus Betts of Ridgefield. She was baptized June 4, 1731, in Fairfield, entered into matrimony November 8, 1752, at Norwalk, and died there 20, the same month, 20, 1752, only a few days after her marriage. Her husband was a Yale graduate and was highly respected physician during the Revolutionary War. I had her death listed incorrectly on my petition. It should read 1752 and not 1822. Gristle Burr Benson, born December 28, 1783, daughter of Isaac and Abigail Burr. She was the second wife of Captain Abraham Benson, a seaman, and they lived in what is now called the Benson Tavern, our town historian, Marsha Minor's house, at the corner of Old Post Road and South Benson Road. Gristle died March 14, 1830, at the age of 46, 2 months and 14 days. Doesn't get any more precise than that, does it? Captain Andrew Wakeman died August 22, 1825, age 75. Captain Andrew Wakeman's two wives were Eunice Smedley, yes, from Samuel Smedley, and Hannah Allen. He built the house occupied by his grandson, Andrew P. Wakeman, on Wakeman Road. This was back in 1881. Captain Wakeman and his father served in the military capacity and Andrew was listed as a captain in military records dated March 28, 1778. Elizabeth Turney, daughter of Mr. Isaac Turney, died June 4, 1817, age 41. Her father, Isaac, was listed as a person, along with many others, who suffered by the enemy in burning the town of Fairfield on the 7th and 8th days of July 1779, and whom all had their taxes abated by the committee appointed by the General Assembly for that purpose. Her family is also associated with Turney Road here in Fairfield. Those are the four that we're petitioning to have removed. The same stone mason will be doing the same work. I have a meeting with Parks and Rec on December 12 and a hearing with Judge Caruso on December 21 to get all my approvals to have them removed. And then update on the Greenfield Hill Cemetery, all four were removed on Monday. They're being repaired and will be back in the cemetery in two weeks.
Wow. Great. Any comments or questions?
Thank you. I didn't make many copies. I will leave this with you. And if there's anybody that wants this information, I can give you my phone number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen, would you get that out to the three of us? Any comments from the public? Ms. Minor, if you would again, return to the podium. You're customary spot.
Because there were so many broken stones and moss-covered inscriptions, in 1881, Kate Perry preserved the writing of the stones in this book. So we have all the stones that are marked as of 1881. And then we have Melanie Marks in 2012, a treasure to this town. And Paige Herman and others cleaned up the cemetery with dozens of children and adults. And these were the kind of the type of thing that Kate Perry was doing by having this book. Our historic cemeteries are where the people who made this town are buried. And we know their names because they adorn our schools, they adorn the roads that we live on. And we wouldn't let broken glass or roofs rot on our other town properties. So it would seem to ignore, you know, the care of our cemetery more than just cutting the grass and picking up some stones or picking up tweaks. So I'm hoping that we'd be remiss if the town didn't participate in some way in helping the costs of taking care of these stones that Melanie has been requesting. I think had not a stone on Gristle Benson's, if that stone had not been raised from the ground, we wouldn't have found a footstone of the oldest cemetery, the oldest stone in the cemetery, which is 1687. And remarkably, because this stone was lifted, we found the headstone from this little, it's only a little stone that's for Samuel Moorhead. It's only a stone about that big. And on it, you can barely see 1687. But we found the footstone. When Gristle Benson's stone was lifted from the ground, we thought, oh my gosh. So it was such a fabulous thing that they did. So I hope the town can find its way to do on the cemetery what you do for the other town properties. And thank you. Thank you.
Now, that was about a month or so back because I had a time, I had a chance to stop in and visit and watch what you were doing down there that day.
Right, right. I remember you were there. I was taking pictures.
And in fact, I would encourage anybody to take a walk through our historic cemeteries. It's amazing how much you can learn about our heritage, about our town going through. The Fairfield Museum even runs tours of the one down here on Beach Road. So you have a chance to...
Particularly on Halloween night, they do.
You have a chance to, yes, go through with a guided tour.
Right, exactly. No, it's a good, it's a good place.
And both promote the spirit and spirits of Fairfield.
Right. I have to say that when I lived here many, many years ago, before I left, I actually used, I used to love to go to cemeteries. And I would take a little lunch. And I have done it over here, just sat there amongst the folks. And when I used to write articles about the various people in town, I did the same thing. I would go and visit their tombstones. So it's a good idea to go and look at the, what are you laughing at?
I'm just telling him how long I've known you and how you did lifetime learners for us for years.
[laughing]
And not to sidestep your earlier question, cemeteries in this town, I guess, as I'm told, many towns, come under the jurisdiction of Parks and Rec. And I think that your point is well taken. We should bring that up with Parks and Rec and see what we can sort out.
Uh-huh. Very good. Yes, we have, you have three that are under your jurisdiction. And I didn't realize that each cemetery is private. But that little cemetery, West Cemetery on the Post Road, practically everything is gone there, you know, because no one's ever taken care of it. And then of course, Greenfield Hill. All right, thank you again.
Ms. Minor, thank you again. And thank you for keeping the flame of Fairfield's history alive.
Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion from here? All right. Any further discussion from the public or comments? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Ms. Marks, and thank you very much for all you do. All right, next up, the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution. Whereas the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council intends to apply for grant funds under the Regional Performance Incentive Program, a state-funded program to encourage regional cooperation referenced in Section 5 of Public 11-61, an Act Concerning Responsible Growth. And such proposal is attached to and made part of this record. And whereas the proposed project will create and develop a regional conservation services program for the member communities of the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council, and the intent of the project is to jointly and cooperatively establish a regional system to reduce the cost burden associated with the development and implementation of hazard mitigation, brown field remediation, open space preservation, and watershed management programs. And whereas, the GBRC will work with member communities to prepare and adopt a memorandum of understanding for the operation and maintenance of the regional conservation spaces. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Fairfield approves and endorses the Regional Performance Incentive Program Grant Application by the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council to be approved by the Connecticut Office of Policy and Management and certifies that pursuant to Section 8 of Public Act 02-239, that there are no legal obstacles to the provision of the services as outlined in the RPIP project. May I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Or rather, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brian, Mr. Padoli, would you like to come up and step us through this a little bit, please?
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Padoli, the Executive Director, the Creator of Bridgeport Regional Council. I'm here today to solicit your support for a grant application that we intend to provide to the State Office of Policy and Management with a Regional Performance Incentive Program. It's a fund comprised of proceeds from the state's rental car tax and hotel occupancy tax, a recurring fund that really incentivizes and promotes regional cooperation on our member towns. I have an overview, and I believe it's been attached to your record. If not, I have copies of the grant. And essentially, what we propose is a regional conservation services program that's broken into three target areas.
Just if I could, Jen, is this attached? Do you know it?
It's these top pages, right?
Yes, the top pages. Okay, very good.
The overview. So essentially, the Regional Conservation Services Program is broken into three target areas. The largest portion of the funds would be allocated to a natural hazard mitigation program. There are four separate activities to be conducted under this piece of the program. The first one is region-wide implementation of the FEMA Community Rating System. This is a voluntary program offered by FEMA that offers discounts on flood insurance premiums for communities that undertake specific actions in regards to their flood plan management, really beyond minimum flood insurance standards. This has proved to be somewhat cost prohibitive for towns because there's significant administrative requirements. There's mapping involved, there's mailing involved. And we feel integrating into this program, we could do it one time for our six towns to thereby reduce the cost of the administrative requirements. Essentially, what this program does, it allows for any property owner in a designated floodway that has to buy flood insurance discounts depending on how much, how far you go in a Class 1 through 10 system that FEMA provides. That's based on the mitigation efforts that you undertake. Typical savings range between 5 and 20% per premium. And we did a case study in Bridgeport and that's up to $186 a year, a month, per policy. So there's a significant cost savings should the Town of Fairfield elect to enroll in this program.
Just if I could interrupt there, at least interject. This is actually a program that was brought to my attention by Planning and Zoning Member Richard Jacobs and had encouraged us to explore it further. As we got into it, we discovered just what Mr. Padoli said, is that the administrative costs can be a problem, both in terms of human resources to get the job done as well as the cost of getting those done. So as we were looking at that, the Greater Bridgeport Planning Council brought this up, put this on the agenda. So the import here is, here's a chance for us to join in a regional initiative, save the town money in terms of our implementing the program. And importantly, because of that, save each of our homeowners in the flood zone dollars per year on their flood insurance. So it seems win-win all around, at least in terms of the initiative being described here. So I want to thank you for including this in your package.
Great. Yeah, a lot of communities that have done it. I found it very beneficial, especially with the new flood maps that FEMA has released and implications of those. So the second area of the natural hazard mitigation plan is a planning exercise that our office wants to undertake using GIS data, where we're going to take, conduct an analysis of flood risk, of a parcel-based analysis. So essentially, we're going to take a look at all the parcels that are subject or have liability to flooding and take a look at what that means in terms of the assessed value and the liability that the towns afford in the event of certain storm categories, 1 through 2, based on some sea level rise data as well as storm slash maps. So we'll be able to tell you exactly what your assessed risk is. The third...
All right. If I can again interject there. Certainly coming out of Sandy, one of the, we've got four initiatives that the town is undertaking in terms of tracking our FEMA costs, looking at our response and what improvements we can make, talking about the, working with other towns on the utility company response. But one of those is looking at the flooding that took place, what worked as part of our mitigation program, what didn't work, what improvements we could make. This task here is something that we could do ourselves but can be done, I think, a little more comprehensively, working with the regional planning cooperation. So this is something that we need done, that the Regional Planning Council is helping us do and paying for. And that, in essence, lowers our costs and saves our taxpayers' money in a very much-needed step on this. So again, thank you for including this in the task.
The third, the third target area is something that actually came as a direct request from the Town of Tremble. During Hurricane Sandy, I was invited to go to their Emergency Operations Center and see that they were operating off of paper maps. So as a resident would call in and say, you know, we have a tree down, this one has wires, they would just go up there and delineate it. And that's what they would work off of. Given the fact that we're developing a regional GIS system, there's opportunity for mobile deployment. Essentially, what that means, we want to empower your field crews for storm response through the acquisition of tablets, smart boards, as well as actually setting up the system so that they can interface directly with the GIS system. So when they're out in the field and they see that a tree is down, they could take a picture of it and it automatically gets updated to the GIS. And that'll allow for two things. It'll allow for real-time information to come in from the field crews. It'll also allow for performance monitoring during storm events. So you'll be able to see when that tree was tagged and when that tree was dealt with. Just outside of the storms, there's other ancillary benefits as well. So when those tablets are available for the town, they can be used by any department, however so you choose. They will be the town's property. And essentially, it provides all of your departments access to our regional GIS system, even outside of storm events. So the acquisition is not just for the occasional storm, ever so, you know. So your town assessor can use and access their information based on the parcels we're going to be creating. The town clerk can access their maps. Planning and zoning can take a look at the zoning of a property in real time. So there's significant benefits and that's what we're offering to set up as an extension of our regional GIS service.
And again, if I can interject one more point. One of the things we saw during the storm is that we had over 350 incidents of trees being down and entangled with wires. So that's part of what we're trying to manage. One of the things we learned is that after UI finally got the crews here, as they were going out working, we've had 60 to 120 crews over that Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, working in town, they would fix things and we would not hear back in EOC what was done. So this starts to fit a very important need. We're able to take a photo and see exactly what's down. Is it the tree, how entangled the wires, what's taken place, and give us a better indication of what needs to be done. It then provides a way for us to easily communicate back when that obstacle or incident has been taken care of. UI is supposed to have tablets at some point. And I guess one of my questions would be, would UI's tablets interface with this system? So would they be compatible communication-wise?
Yeah, completely. Essentially, all it would be is a typical tablet with an app that we would develop. Like a click and log into that app.
Okay. We still have some work to do in terms of UI. Again, one of the requests UI made of us at one point was to provide 100 paper maps so their crews could find their way around rather than having this tablet and GIS-based, as they were supposed to do coming, based on the two-storm panel and Irene, and a number of things that we have to work on with UI with respect to that. But again, this fits something else the town really needs to do. This would improve our response to the storm, hopefully in conjunction with UI. But independent of what UI does or doesn't do, this would help us be more self-sufficient and have a better picture of what's taken place during the storm. So we're thrilled to have that included.
So the final component under the natural hazard mitigation target area is the development of a living shoreline plan. And as abstract as that sounds, I think it really stands to... And as abstract as that sounds, I think it really stands to provide benefits for the Town of Fairfield and our coastal communities. We're going to take a detailed assessment of our coast and take a look at areas whether there may be sort of shoreline stabilization efforts, natural shoreline stabilization efforts that can be undertaken. And we're going to be developing a long-term planning document so that as disaster assistance or mitigation money becomes available, you'll have very targeted improvements to specific coastal areas for that type of work. Essentially, it's a planning exercise that will dovetail to an implementation plan provided to the town. So the other two target areas are brownfield redevelopment and open space and watershed mapping, and these two are largely GIS-based. We've engaged in a project for the city of Bridgeport where we're taking a look at their brownfields inventory and mapping that, as well as connecting documentation from DEEP and EPA, so that it's one click away, rather than having to do, you know, administrative procurement requests to the actual agencies. We're going to do that all at the front end so that you could access that information through a document management system. This grant will help us extend that to our neighboring towns, to Fairfield, to Stratford, Monroe, and Tremble. And while the brownfields implications aren't as extensive as they are in Bridgeport, it's a great starting point when you want to try to redevelop these properties in certain areas of your town. Helps really kind of make it an easier process, so people know what they're getting into when they start down the road of brownfield funding. The other component is open space and watershed management. Our agency will take a look at all of your deeds that are related to conservation easements. We plan on mapping them all and linking the source documentation, which is the deed or whatever sort of documentation the town has in a document management system, so again, you're one click away. We will also map all the impervious surfaces, taking a look at habitat, species, soils, and vegetation, and map that and delineate that in a more detailed manner than current state data sources provide. So it's a fairly comprehensive program, there's a lot of different target areas, but really, it represents an ecosystem-based approach to all of these issues. And I think the more we could do that, the more we could group them under and share the cost of administration moving forward, the more successful a long-term life of this grant will be.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you so much, Mr. Bedoli, for being here. And one of my broad, general questions is, this, the timing of this seems just perfect. Mr. Tetro was jumping in with how many of these things just dovetail with issues that we've just now faced. Is this something that has been kind of on the back burner? Has this been priority? Or were there other projects that were possibly eligible for this, and this seems more prudent at this time?
Yeah, essentially, this application came out of a recent group reform, and this was about a year ago, actually. The Regional Council voted to create a Conservation Technical Advisory Committee. So really, we put together the laundry list and the wish list of things that we think need to happen, you know, after Irene. So this has been long, you know, ongoing. And, you know, Sandy, of course, is a time-sensitive, but this is something that we've been thinking about for quite some time.
So it's been a priority?
Yes, very much so.
Moving through. I have a few, so I don't know.
Go ahead.
Okay. And some of these may actually not be directed to you necessarily. I know that in the previous conversation about the GIS piece, I remember when Rich White was here that day, he talked about a lot of the things that we had already done here in Fairfield, and that, as I was reading through this, I had a number of questions about where are we already here in Fairfield, because we have a tremendous department who has done a lot of great work. We weren't using paper maps here in Fairfield, for example. And I certainly am not interested in duplicating services, and just want to have reassurance from you, since I don't think Mr. Michelangelo is here, but that, the work that's already been done within the communities will be integrated into any of the work that you're doing, and we won't be duplicating efforts.
Yes, completely. And we've actually begun work on the regional GIS project, and we've also created a committee to staff and to guide that effort. Juliana Harris from the town is on that, as well as Joe Michelangelo, I believe, the new Department of Public Works Director. So we're highly involved with the town, and we're making sure we don't duplicate services. Basically, what we want to provide is updated information for them to work from, and in no way would diminish that need to have them involved.
And again, just to add in there, the timing of the development of the regional GIS system fits in well. It's not something, one, it's not something we're paying for them to develop because they're doing it for the region. We get to participate if we choose or not. But we're also at the point where we're going to have to make a significant investment in our current GIS system, so that this has the potential to save us a considerable amount of money from that standpoint.
Which is a great thing. That's always interesting. May I continue, or I'm certainly happy to?
Sure, please.
In terms of the brownfield redevelopment and reading that locally accessible inventory, I'm wondering if this is a read-only, or will municipalities also be able to make changes here? The language in that didn't make clear. Is that something that really you would have control over, or the town would also be feeding into the input?
Yeah, it could go either way. The permissions would be set up during the development of the process. I would assume that there would be a front-end system where the town can upload things. We probably would want to have some sort of monitoring to make sure that there's not duplicative efforts and have that sort of standardized.
Right. That's, yes, thank you for mentioning that. And I'll yield. I actually have a few more, but if Mr. Kylie has some, I'll...
Just a couple of quick things. Brian, thanks for being here. This is a, this is a great program, and it sounds like something we really need to do, and I like the eco-based approach that you were taking comprehensively here. So that's, that's all great news, and thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. On, you know, regionalization sometimes gets a bad name, so I want to better understand just quickly the process for getting all the towns lined up, you know, who's on board, who's not, who's next, what happens if they don't all agree or line up or sign on.
Okay, great. So essentially, this, it's, the process is based on the requirements of the grant, essentially. We have our Regional Council that all of our six towns are a part of, and we've actually spoken with this grant before we came out of the town councils. The Regional Performance Incentive Program requires council approval, I mean, Board of Selectmen in your case, approval of our application, endorsing our application. The nice thing about this is there's no local match committed, so it's just simply your say. The process by which is, I get to go on a roadshow, and I get to go to all of our towns. I've been to the Town of Tremble, and they approved it on Monday night. I'm here tonight. Tomorrow night, I will be in Easton, and somehow Monday, I will be both in Monroe and Stratford at the same time. So we're going to try to figure that out. But, yeah, we'll, and then Bridgeport has actually heard it on Monday. They have a two-committee process, so I won't be there until January. If they all, if one does not elect, the other five go in, or two. You know, we don't, it doesn't have to be all six, although our grant application would be more competitive if you have all six.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
I think so, right. And the other thing I have to ask myself, or ask you, I'm sorry, is, you know, down the road, as this project grows or continues, do we see any need for any town funding down the road to continue the administrative end of it? Or do you look for further funding? Or is it just that much unknown? Now, I'm just looking down the road and seeing what might grow out of this, which is, which is great stuff, and possibly how we might participate in funding it if required.
Okay, great. So, yeah, prior to developing this application and upon my arrival at the Regional Council, I looked into our funding, our program funding, a funding that comes from the U.S. Department of Transportation. And the U.S. DOT and the Federal Administration, Federal Highway Administration have really made advances in terms of allowing conservation, transportation money to be used for conservation planning exercises. So I've actually worked in a lot of this work into that, so that it could be continued and sustained moving forward without the actual financial assistance from the town, apart from the local match that you provide already for that money. So I don't anticipate any more administrative costs out of this program, and I think it'll really be funded, and this grant actually funds it for three years, just upfront, so we can get it going. But, you know, the administrative stuff is already included in our standard work program.
So you don't see any large overhang, years for outward?
No, a lot of this stuff is going to be updated as it goes. It's really the capital costs associated to it that is the most on our ass.
Just to reference a point, you mentioned our local match. Could you explain to the board where that comes from?
Yeah, definitely. So essentially, the largest, although we have many grant sources, the largest chunk of our funding comes from the Federal Highway Administration, and that's an 80-10-10 program. So we have 80% of our funds come from the federal government, and they require a 20% match, which is split up 10% from the state and 10% from local dues. So that 10% is actually split among our six towns, and that's provided, I believe Fairfield provides about $18,000 a year to that effort. It's the whole, it's about a $79,000 required.
Oh, that's our portion of 79?
Yeah, your portion of 79 is 18.
Okay.
A little bit, 18, too, I think.
Thank you. Good. Thank you.
And to Mr. Kylie's point about the towns, the memorandum of understanding, what's the timeline for that going forward from here?
Yeah, and essentially, if we do receive the grant awards, we're typically developing those in concurrence with the work. I really see it just being a codification of the CTAC group, making sure that we have that group as an advisory and ongoing thing. Our council has already approved it. But to operate and maintain this sort of work, I think we already have the existing mechanisms in place. Yeah, and definitely, and I think further to your question, too, I don't know if I addressed it completely with the regionalization. I apologize if I completely addressed your question right now, but I'm jumping around. But I think one of the things that's nice about this program is it really shows how regionalism can, can benefit communities, because it's not a top-down approach. This is completely voluntary, and they're trying to incentivize cooperation, and that's really what the intent of this is. You know, it's not amended, it's not required, and it's us making an offer to the town to be a part of it, and hopefully, you know, at the end, save the town money.
Right. Thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions?
A few more, if I may. I, this is a very attractive opportunity, I think, for the town, certainly, many wonderful assets for us here. And one of the things that you talked about was working with various groups, and I wondered if you had had a chance already to talk with, or would it be part of the planned groups like the Aspetuck Land Trust, and in terms of the watershed land use management, the open space pieces, would they be included in the conversation, and how would that happen?
Yeah, well, I guess as a background before I go into the answer, our group really got involved in watershed management based on our task to implement the Quonic River Initiative Plan, so it's descending from Monroe through Tremble into Bridgeport. So we haven't engaged directly with the groups in Fairfield, but that definitely would be required, because mapping the conservation easements is something that they would, you know, love to have, to have an actual access to where local assets are, where land trusts hold assets for, you know, various conservation planning. So, yes, we would want to have, basically, the way the CTAC group is set up is you have a town staff and a member of your Conservation Commission on our board, and then anyone can join as an advisory member, so that we'll definitely invite them as part of this grant.
And I appreciate that, because I think one of the things that is of interest to me is the accessibility issue, and it talks about that in the grant, the public access to data and other groups as well. So I think that's phenomenal. Another, just technical question, I was reading in the grant about the cloud technology and the use of the cloud technology. I'm not a technology person, and I was thinking about the storm, if cell towers are down, how does, how does that work? What's the backup or?
Yeah. Well, the nice thing actually about cloud is actually the safeguard for that, because it's stored offsite. It's essentially, cloud is just an offsite server. So all the information that you'll be having, you'll have to need accessibility to, we're going to be looking, we're probably going to be using Amazon Web Services, because it's been proven the most reliable. And essentially, that is, if amazon.com is up during your storm, your web application is up. The only caveat is internet connection. So the one thing, actually, speaking to the maintenance thing, I spoke about this with the first selectman, is we're putting in for tablets. Tablets are great, but they offer Wi-Fi or 3G-enabled, so one is dependent upon a cell service plan. Under this grant, it would be the Wi-Fi-enabled one. If the town wants to elect to allow for mobile deployment, that would be a cost that the town would have to incur on the tablet. So that 3G cost is the connection to update it in the field. That would not work if the cell tower was down. But it would work, you would have the tablet, and if you made updates, as soon as you got onto a Wi-Fi connection, which there is no ongoing cost to the town, it would update still, just the same. It just wouldn't happen in real time when they're actually in the field.
Okay. Yeah, and that's, that was just a question, as, you know, Mr. Tetro was talking about that, the real-time piece, and I know we certainly had issues with that during Sandy, the internet connection was, was a struggle, so just curious how that would work.
Well, it's not, it's actually not the internet, it's the cell connection, which is, that's the way, because it'll be updated on the cellphone, so that'll go to our server, so you don't have to worry about the internet connection, actually.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's proven the more, the most reliable ways to go about it. I mean, short of...
Gotcha, okay.
Manual.
One more, if I may. Bless you. The Living Shoreline Plan, which sounds wonderful, and it's the use of ecologically friendly, and I learned a new word, is it right, how do you say that? Reparian?
Reparian, restoration.
Reparian. Yes, I actually looked it up in the dictionary. Would that preclude, if that's the way that we as a town are going, would that preclude other non-ecological conversations to happen in terms of protecting the shoreline? Obviously, this grant talks about the benefits to that, but does that, down the road, if Fairfield decides that they want to have a conversation, that we as a town, we want to have a conversation about some other options, would, would doing this preclude that conversation?
No, I think it would just help you make a more educated decision in terms of what's the most cost-effective and long-term approach to that, I really feel, because in some of these instances, you know, the cost may be prohibitive to do a large-scale ecological project for a hard improvement, like a seawall may be the best option. Doesn't preclude you at all, just provides you with information.
Okay. Great.
Mr. Powell?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good, thank you very much.
Any comments from the public? Mr. Hirsch, if you'd come up here and...
I'd like to address this to the first, to have this go through the first selectman, and then naturally to you. I'd just like to give you a current happening in my neighborhood. I did not complain, because I knew what was going on in the emergency of Sandy, and across the street from my house, there was a tanglement of pine trees and wires, as the first selectman has described over and over to the community. I love to get involved, so I was speaking to the fellas that had come in from Indiana, and they were working on addressing the tree situation before the Unite Illuminating Company, which is our local power company, to come in and address the wires. The fellas front, and there were eight trucks from Indiana, and I was speaking to one of the foremen, and apropos to what you want to do and integrate into the community here, would the people from Indiana, if they came in on another guard-fa-bid situation like this, would they have tablets available to them so they could coordinate with the first selectman and the first emergency crews that he was dealing with, namely, the police, fire, et cetera, et cetera, to help them address these situations?
I believe that's what we, I believe that's, the question earlier was whether UI would have tablets that would be integrated with this and follow the same communications protocol, and Mr. Bedoli responded yes in that regard. So thank you.
All right. And I think one of the things I'd like to add, just in terms of this tablet, it's not just the tablets will be able to access the information, the app will be available for smartphones as well. So any smartphones that the town currently maintains, you could do that, and then there's also the option, if you did want to do a public element, you can't do that as well.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. Thank you. Back to the board. Any follow-on questions here? Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bedoli, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian. All right. Next up, it's been a long time coming. To hear, consider, and approve the renaming of the Street One-Rod Highway to Richard White Way in honor of former Director of Public Works, Richard J. White Jr. Junior. Junior.
I never knew.
I didn't know. Effective honor before July 1, 2013, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Just to clarify, we don't think there's going to be any objectives or obstacles that would keep us from doing this, but just to make sure that we follow, we can dot the i's, cross the t's, we're providing some timeframe here to make sure that that happens. So we said honor before July 1, 2013. That's the only intent of that. We don't know anything that would necessarily hold it up that long.
Right.
But we wanted to provide for that, so it didn't have to come back to this board for any further edits or inducements.
Sure.
That's the only intent of that. We don't know anything that would necessarily hold it up that long.
Right.
But we wanted to provide for that, so it didn't have to come back to this board for any further edits or inducements.
Sure. Any questions from this board? Or comments?
I'll go first. No questions, just a couple of comments. I mean, I'm just overjoyed to be able to vote on this, to be honest with you. I believe, and I'm going to date myself again, I believe my first meeting with Rich White was in 1993, when I was a freshman member of the RTM, and I think Rich was the director at that point in time, give or take a little bit of time. And from that point right through today, everything this man has done has been in the best interest of the town of Fairfield. From A to Z, every day, every project, every proposal, every enhancement, he has put us on the cutting edge of environmental technologies and, I mean, everything from waste management to the roads and you name it, everything in between. And I could talk all night, and of course I won't, he has done a phenomenal job for this town, and I'm very proud to have known him and gotten to work with him for the past 19 or 20 years, and this road is appropriately named, or it will be.
Kristen?
I will just echo, and more than anything, just say thank you, Rich. You are an incredible person and have been, done an incredible job for this town. Thank you.
And I got a chance to talk about this at Rich's retirement dinner and went on for a bit at that point, so I will both echo Kevin's comments. It's been a pleasure working with Rich, and he's contributed to this community in so many ways. This was one of our ways of both saying that we'll always have a piece of him here, that he can always find his way home. And I guess the... Did we get a motion for that?
Yes.
Do we? I think we did, yes.
Okay, good. Any comments from the public? You're part of the public still? Do you live here still? Rich, come on up. Mr. White, without his normal charts and...
No, I just wanted to express my appreciation for the suggestion. It really means a lot to me, and I've always said it every time I've had the opportunity that the people that work with my department know that incredibly conscientious and talented people that I've worked with over the years, and I always looked at my job to let them do what they want, do what they do best, stay out of their way and help them when I could, and they deserve a lot of credit. The other thing I was looking forward to, there's 150,000 trucks and vehicles on that road a year, and I was figuring a toll booth at 10 cents a ton. I have some extra income, so thanks for the opportunity.
I should mention that as one of the other measures of Rich as both the man and the manager, this was actually suggested by one of the workers in the DPW department. Back to the board, any further comments?
No.
All right, we're ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Mr. White. Next up.
Good stuff.
To hear, consider, and approve the designation of a street named Ash Creek Boulevard for the new access road at the Fairfield Metro Train Station and proposed development that runs from Kings Highway East to Black Rock Turn Pike. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let me kick it off then. We had spent quite a bit of time looking at a possible other name for this that was not going to work out based on the family's wishes, so we looked for another name. This was one of the ones that had been suggested. It seemed appropriate, but I wanted to make sure, two things, one is that we have ample time to consider it, so if we need to postpone that to give any of us time to think about that or any further public communication, happy to do that.
I think it's a great idea, and it's a great neighborhood name, and I'm certainly prepared to support it. If we need to wait for any other reason, that's fine, but otherwise, I'm good.
Yep, none that I know of, just potentially better communication?
No, I think it's aptly named and works well, and I think our engineering department and others are eager to have the official designation, so I'm happy to support it and vote on it tonight.
Yeah, our engineering department has been very thorough in reminding me on a fairly frequent basis that we need a name for our unnamed road. I tried to relate them the story of the no-name restaurant in Boston, and they would have none of it. All right, any comments from the public? Am I allowed to ask the public a question?
I think so.
Is it, anybody feel bad if we vote on this now? Do we need to keep this open for another week just to provide more input? Anybody, any sense of the body of the body?
Yeah.
We okay with this?
Town government.
Okay, that's a first, I've never done that.
Yeah.
Thank you all. All right, unless there's any other comment from the public, we're back to the board. All right, back to the board. Are you guys ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We've got it.
All right.
I'll be so happy.
Congratulations, Ash Creek. Next up, to hear a report from Ron Atwater and Richard DeAngelis on the Top 10 Five-Year Plan for the Senior Center. Mr. Atwater?
I think Dr. DeAngelis should go first.
Okay. Dr. DeAngelis. And if you'd be good enough just to give us your name and address as you start your presentation, that would be appreciated.
I am Richard DeAngelis, retired professor of history at Fairfield University, and actually I don't live in Fairfield. I lived in Fairfield for only 62 years, but I had to move. I've been active with the Fairfield Senior Center since 2002, and I have been a volunteer doing various kinds of things. And this committee, we call it the Top 10 Committee because it came about about a year ago this time when the first selectman had a conversation with Claire Grace, who was the director of the Senior Center, about budgets, and his, I believe his comment was, she was asking for certain things, and his comment was that send me your list of top 10 things and we'll see what we can do. So she put together a committee, and I was asked to head the committee, and we got together and we started to talk about these things. Several of us knew each other because we had been active in the center, and as we talked about the top 10 things, you know, a new, some new mechanicals in the bathroom with some blinds and a carpet and a new chair for one of the secretaries, we realized that that really wasn't what, that wasn't the problem with the Senior Center. Then it was, and so as we talked, we found out that we really had to find out, that things had changed in senior centers, we knew that, and that we had to find out what was happening in the world of senior centers. And so a committee was, this committee and I, I'd just like to briefly name the committee because several of them are here. Ron, Ron Atwater, who is our technical computer guru and has been very, very helpful. Margaret Andrews is not here, I don't believe. Mary Jo Cornell, Nancy Legary is here, Betty Minor is here, Dave Peck, former chief of police, and Palma Seneca is here. We met for hundreds of hours, hundreds and hundreds of hours. We read lots and lots of literature. We visited six other senior centers on their physical site with appointments and interviewed their staff and their director, carried back statistics. We also, on the website, scanned many other senior centers, got information, and we decided to put together a report on what we thought would really address the needs of the Fairfield Senior Center. To be very brief, we found, and I'm going to let Ron deal with some of the technical, some of the data, he's the dataman, you know that. But what we found was that we really, that senior centers had changed. Our senior center was started in 1992, and over the last 50 years that there have been senior centers, they have changed greatly in their function and in their clientele. People who went to senior centers generally were older people and are older people, they go for various kinds of help, you know, we have assistance with tax, we have assistance with FEMA now is going on there, there is assistance with people who need tax abatement, there's medical questions, there are forms, et cetera, they get help, lots of that. Well, 50 years ago, many of the clientele who were coming to senior centers were not even high school graduates. Today, more and more of them are college graduates. Some of that work is still necessary, and it is going on, and our social workers are busy and busier every year, but there's another dimension that's happened in senior centers. And those people who have been affiliated with senior centers for a long time have gone through an evolution, and that change has been, that it's different clientele, the demographics are changing. In many places, younger people are coming into senior centers, and senior centers have changing schedules. We find that there's a greater need for some of the kind of recreational and social things that go on. We have a very, very active program for exercise, and we have an unusual program in terms of our lifetime learners. We provide, I think perhaps the second largest educational program in this Fairfield County, in this lifetime learners program. In addition to that, there are all kinds of other things going on. But the need is that our budget is, has not been really tended to in over many, many years. Some 14 or 15 years ago, 14 years ago, I believe, the town contracted with Fairfield Woodfield Services to run the Senior Center, and the building was put on a minimum maintenance program. The budget was minimum maintenance, and the program was basically to accomplish what they could with the limited funds and provide a hot lunch program for the needy seniors. The director of the center wears two hats. Claire is the, she's the head of human services and also the director of the Senior Center, that's an unusual thing. Of the six centers that we studied, not one of them had a person who shared that job. All of them have an independent and separate director of the Senior Center, and several of them have had, have received different experiences and training over the years that is more appropriate to the kind of things we're talking about. So we worked hard, we had given a summary, one of the things that we were fortunate to have was the Millward Brown Survey, which I think some of you people may have read in the newspapers. Millward Brown volunteered and get a survey of seniors. We got some data back, it's not as complete as we'd like to see perhaps, but we do have some information. And the general feeling is that people don't know much about the center, that's the first thing, and for years, I and others have been saying we needed a budget to do more outreach, more publicity, more adverts in the paper. The second thing is they have a perception of senior centers as a place where decrepit old people go and get a free lunch, and it's not really what it is. It's a lot more than that, and it's changing all over the country to be a lot more than that. We have some really dynamic programs, and we're doing, we're looking to intergenerational things, and I, currently I have some fellows who are, I'm talking with Claire about running a summer camp at the Senior Center for young boys and girls in aviation. They will build five model airplanes at the Senior Center, and they will get an opportunity to fly a radar-controlled model airplane. That's one of the projects that we can do with them. So there's many, many things that are going on at the Senior Center, and many more can. But what we need is some staffing, some budget, and in particular, we find that the Millward Report supported the kinds of things that we were talking about. So we concluded our report, we had given an earlier version to the selectmen, and a copy is available, I believe you all have copies of it now. And what we're asking for is a plan over a number of years, I think five years, to consider over five years to make the kinds of changes to the staffing of the building that could make us competitive with the best in class, and that would, one thing would be a full-time director of the Senior Center, separate and independent from the human services director. A person who has special training in senior centers. And as I said, you wouldn't hire a fireman to run your police department. Senior centers are very different things today than they were 50 years ago. The other thing we would like to see is an additional clerk in this year. So over five years, we have suggested that incrementally some changes be made. The second part of the report addresses the building, and there are some conflicting evidence. We had Mr. White come to look at our building, and I have to say this, I only met him one time, but that was one of the, that was one of the professional encounters I had in my lifetime that really impressed me. He came there with maps in hand and drawings, and he was really professional. But the building is, we recommend that the town undertake an evaluation, a study to, I have the report here, just two points that made, two major points were made. That the town undertake a feasibility study, which encompasses both construction of a new facility and major renovation of either the existing building or other town-owned properties to accommodate the specific needs of Fairfield's increasing senior population. That a full-time director and that feasibility study, we think are imperative to be begun immediately. The rest of the report is clear, and I think that it's possible that Fairfield could produce that. Now, Ron has some demographic information that I think you'll find very interesting. I want to thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions to the end, or you want to ask any now?
Just before Ron comes up, I just wanted to comment on, not the content, but the report itself. In business and in government, over the last two or three decades, I've read a lot of reports, good ones, bad ones, comprehensive ones, topics all over the map. This is one of the most comprehensive, complete reports I have ever seen. The benchmarking, the analysis, the information, it is evident by reading this that the effort that went into putting this document together was in absolute hundreds of hours, as you mentioned, of just a complete team effort to get this work done, and I want to, you know, thank you for that time, that effort, and for a report that is so substantive and informational.
Thank you. We spent a lot of time, and the actual format of the report, I think I have to give a lot of credit to Ron, but we all worked at this, and we had a couple of passionate sessions.
I'm sure.
But this is the result. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Atwater? If you'd be so kind.
Mr. First Selectmen and members of the board, I really thank you for the opportunity that you've given us here this evening to speak with you. I would just like to tell the audience here and the members of the public that this is our report, and that we will shortly be placing this report up on our senior website. You will find it at www.fairfieldct.org/senior.html. We hope that you'll go up to our site, take a look at our newsletter, and take a look at our report. I think that a report that we...
Could you give your name first?
Oh, my name is Ron Atwater. I live at 134 Mallard Street. I've been a resident of Fairfield since 1971, and I'm a volunteer at the Senior Center. What I would like to say is I think we've come up with an unbiased and objective report, a report that doesn't pull any punches. By the same token, I would not want anyone to interpret this report as an indictment of the town or as an indictment of the administration of the Senior Center. It most assuredly is not that. What it is, is a plea for resources. That is what this report is all about. And we make that plea against the background of an absolutely tremendous demographic change that is taking place in the United States. That demographic change has to do with the fact that Baby Boomers are aging into the senior care continuum at an alarming rate, 10,000 a day. By the year 2015, the population 65 and above will grow by 12%. By 2030, that population is going to grow by 53%. At the same time that that's happening, the resources that are available to support these senior services are declining. There is no question of that. We've seen that just recently in the state of Connecticut, where Governor Malloy cut social service spending by some $32 million. At the federal level, there is no way that the government can continue transfer payments from the young to the old at the current level. That is simply unsustainable. And if you take a look at the Simpson Bowles Report, you will see that they are proposing some pretty draconian measures. What we are seeing is a tremendous increase in demand, there's no question about that, and we are at the same time seeing a significant decline in the resources to support that demand. So it was against this particular backdrop that we decided to undertake a study and an evaluation of the Senior Center. And we wanted to look at the Senior Center in these terms. Is the Senior Center positioning itself to meet this challenge in terms of its budget, in terms of its staffing levels, in terms of its facility, in terms of its programs and services, and in terms of its management operations, its processes, and its procedures? That's what this report is all about. And I would just like to take a very brief amount of time to take a look at each one of these aspects. First, budget. We took a look at six different senior centers in addition to Fairfield. I draw your attention to the Wallingford Senior Center. Wallingford is not an affluent Gold Coast community. They have a median income of about $75,000 to $78,000 a year. The budget for the Wallingford Senior Center, which is the top-ranked senior center in our benchmark listing, is $1 million. $750,000 paid for by the community, and the remainder is raised by the Senior Center in Wallingford in terms of revenue. I'll give you another example, Milford Senior Center. This is a senior center in a town which demographically is very, very similar to Wallingford in terms of median house... Wallingford in terms of median household income. The budget that the Milford Senior Center has is $1,300,000. The budget here in Fairfield, as I understand it, is around $340,000. It's not so much the numbers that I bring to your attention, it is the relative difference. So, the first point is the budget. The second point is staffing levels. And what we found is that the staffing levels at the senior center directly relates to the budget, and that there is a very real correlation between the quality of a senior center and the programs and services that it offers, the budget that it has, and they have that budget to support staffing. And I can tell you, the centers like Wallingford and centers like Milford have really good staffing levels. They have professional full-time directors. They also have professional full-time support staffs. Now, the staffing level at the Fairfield Senior Center has not changed since 1994, with one exception. The director's position went from full-time to part-time. We think that these staff levels are inadequate. We would like to see a budget that supports the staff increases that we proposed in this report, which we think are very modest in the fiscal year 2013, 2014. We requested the addition fundamentally of a full-time director, a part-time social worker, and a part-time receptionist. Based on the budget that Claire originally submitted, these additional positions would increase the budget by, I think, $116,000 or thereabouts. We think that that would bring about a tremendous improvement in the operations of the senior center. The next item is the facility. I happen to like the facility. I think it's a good facility. I think it's very flexible. It was built in 1952. It's a good, solid Eisenhower-era red brick, red brick building. Based on a study that the town conducted about 10 years ago, and based on Rich's assessment, he was just here, we know that that building has a sound envelope. We also know that based on the Millwood Brown report, the Millwood Brown report suggested that there be a brightening, a freshening up, and a modernization of that facility. We know what maintenance will cost on that facility through 2020, based on figures supplied to us by Rich. And that's $1,430,000. Got to re-point some masonry, overhaul the air conditioning system in the building, replace the windows, and finish the repairs on the roof. Any renovation and exist, any renovation beyond that would of course be in addition to that cost. We have suggested some renovations. We're not experts at this. We do not know what those renovations would cost. We did ask the town engineer, Mr. Girardi, to take a look at this for us, and he feels that there are a number of renovations that could be done very creatively, thinking out of the box, that, and to quote him, could literally transform the facility. On the other hand, we have made a recommendation, as Dr. D'Angelo's has pointed out, that perhaps it might be a good idea to undertake a feasibility study to determine what's in the best economic interests of the town, whether we rehabilitate the existing facility, rehabilitate another town facility, or come up with a new facility. So, that's what we have asked for. In terms of programs and services, the senior center offers a variety of superb programs. And I just want to emphasize the fact that the kind of programs that all 15,000 senior centers offer here in the United States involve three things. They involve physical exercise, they involve mental exercise, they involve socialization, and they involve having fun. All three of those factors, any number of medical studies, sound medical studies have shown prolong the health of seniors. They can prevent the onset of chronic disease and cognitive dysfunction. So, that these programs are essential to senior life in reducing the overall cost of medical care in the country. The problem that we have is that nobody has gone out and measured really what these savings are. But we have suggested a list of programs that are not currently available at the senior center, which are currently available at other senior centers, which the director and the program coordinator may wish to continue. Two points about the programming. Millwood Brown suggested programming aimed at younger seniors. That's a good idea. The problem with that is that younger seniors continue to work, and they cannot get to the senior center during normal operating hours. So, as a part of our proposal, we have suggested that the senior center stay open for four hours, say till 8:30 at night, at least one day a week. Wallingford does this. And perhaps open itself up on a Sunday, a Saturday morning or a Saturday afternoon. Finally, in terms of management, operations, and procedures, we've recommended two things. First, that the senior center seek national accreditation. This is important in order to establish the senior center as the best in class, but it is also important because it will force the institutionalization of the processes and procedures. And we think that's very, very important. The second thing that we've recommended, as the First Selectman knows, is a management information system to be put into the senior center by which we will be able to register members. We will be able to track members' use of programs at the center. We'll be able to do scheduling. We'll be able to automate bus scheduling and keep track of virtually every activity that goes on in the senior center. My understanding right now is approval for that is still making the rounds, and we hope that we can go forward with that soon. And we would expect, if we get legal approval, to have that system up and running within the first quarter of next year. So, I thank the board for its kind attention, and I'd just like to conclude by paying a very, very special tribute to my good friend Claire Grace, who I think has done an absolutely outstanding job running the Fairfield Senior Center, particularly considering that over these years, she has had to work with very, very limited resources. I'm grateful to her. I'm grateful to the staff at the senior center. I congratulate her on the work that she's done, and I wish her a very, very happy and fruitful retirement. With that, I thank you.
I want to thank you. And just to, actually, Bill, in part, what you said, Claire and I talked, I'm going to say over a year ago, but just about then, in kicking off some of these. And I want to thank you for your leadership in terms of pulling together both the survey group and finding out how to get that funded without taxpayer dollars, as well as inspiring the group for our top 10 group here to get out and get this work done. One of the things that, that I felt was missing a year ago is, I sat down and talked with Claire and, and talked with the seniors because of the jumbled past, no reflection on, on anyone there, but because we were in Woodfield and then out of Woodfield and, and kind of, of, without the, some of the support or visibility, I guess I should say. I know, I first met Claire when we were taking a Port of Finance tour down at the senior center and got into a discussion of exactly how many leaks there were in the roof.
And the toilets.
Yes.
But he didn't like it up on the roof.
No. But I think it, in, in order to, to service our senior population, we need a vision going forward. We need a roadmap, and we need priorities, and we need improved understanding of what the seniors want. And I think in the past 12 months, you guys have done a marvelous job of putting that together and giving us, you know, the framework, the foundation, the ability to talk about where we go from here, and what we do, and, and what sequence we do it. So, Claire, I want to thank you. Somewhat certainly, your leadership as chair of the Human Services Commission, and then Dr. D'Angelo's and, and Mr. Atwater, I know you guys have taken the lead in putting this together. And I know you mentioned other folks, and I don't mean to not mention them, but I don't have all the names here. But I think this has been a, just a great process, that you guys have taken ownership of this and said that we want to be part of the solution, and we want to help put this together. And so, I thank you for, for putting all that in. And just with that as a lead, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any questions. Kristin, please.
I would also like to echo what both of the selectmen have said, and it's tremendous, the investment, the time, the passion, the thoroughness. It's very helpful. In social services, it's the soft science, and we often, people often use the words warm and fuzzy, but there are very clear measurable outcomes that can be achieved. And what you've done in providing this report is allow us to have a framework that will look towards measurable outcomes, and the accreditation, it talks about, you know, that. And I really appreciate what you have invested of yourselves and for the community in doing this. I, again, as, as Mr. Tetra said, I think it gives us a good framework to have a conversation. And we'll just follow up. I think one of the things, I don't know if Mr. D'Angelo's, it was you or Mr. Atwater said, actually, it was Mr. D'Angelo's, that the budget hasn't been tended to over many, many years. And I think that this is going to be a multi-year conversation, because it is going to take a number of years before we can really get to the point and of where we think we need to be as a town, where we do need to be. What I appreciate is you have done the vision process, that you have started that, that conversation with vision, and that really helps all of us, so thank you. I have a few questions, but I'll.
Just a couple comments, and thank you again for everything. Just two kind of questions for myself, and bigger picture questions. Some of the statistics that you mentioned about the growth of the population of seniors, they're very alarming. So, and I'm sure you're way ahead of me on this, but as far as, as we enter into the feasibility study phase of this, hopefully we will, and I certainly hope we do, I'm not sure how to approach it, but can we try to size our current facility and see, I mean, is our facility going to be large enough in 10 years or 20 years to provide the programming that the number of seniors we know we're going to have down the road to be able to accommodate and take care of their needs?
If I may?
Yes, please.
If you could, do it from the mic, please, so that our viewers at home can hear.
The present building is 41,000 square feet. We're occupying 28,000 square.
28, okay.
The rest is being used for child's gardens and other things. So, the building itself, though there's renovation and modernization, in terms of square field, square footage, the building is, is large enough. The largest, the, the other building I think that was close, Milford is, the only one I think that is large enough. Milford is 33,000 square feet.
Right.
And they used the entire building.
They did. So, this, it's getting close. And, and the other thing that came to mind is this, these, this information, as I mentioned before, is wonderful, and you guys have done a fantastic job of putting it together. And you've looked at all the, all the communities in Connecticut. Could part of the feasibility study possibly go to other areas of the country? I don't know, Florida, California, wherever, and just see what might be out there that other states or other communities might be doing that nobody up here has thought to do yet, and maybe work some of those things into that information as we go forward?
Ron? I certainly wouldn't see any problem with that. I think one of the things that we found, and looking at the state of Connecticut, is that I don't think there's a senior center director in the state of Connecticut that's not looking for a bigger budget and a better facility. So, I, I think that's, that's a pretty common request. I, I think, again, the facility that we do have offers, I think, a great deal of flexibility. It's well situated. It's got ample parking. It's in a very low-traffic area. And there's some members of the committee who would take another view and have preference, say, to going toward a new facility. That's why there's compromised language in the report. But certainly, any study that is looking after the best practices of senior centers around the country won't go wrong.
And I think, to answer your question, if we, if we move for, to, toward a bid, a bid for the National Association of Senior Center certification, they would then review our center, and we would get, and we would get input from what other kinds of centers are doing nationally, so it would, so it would help us to shape the way the place would develop.
Thank you. That makes sense.
I might add that accreditation process is a fair amount of work, obviously, and it's the kind of thing that does require a full-time director and additional staff support in order to get it done, but it's well worth it. I think there are seven senior centers total in the state of Connecticut who are accredited.
And just to be clear, the ones that are included in your study, were they accredited?
Only one, Wallingford.
Okay. Kevin, I'll pay a phone.
I'm good. No, I'm good.
Mr. Atwater, thank you. You're being the data person. I had actually a question about some of the data in the report. Seniors served per day, the 200 to 240. So, we don't have membership, and we have trouble with counting. How do we know that we have 200 to 240 seniors being served a day? How was that data arrived at?
That's based presently on a manual count. Manual counts tend to be inaccurate. What we're trying to do is to get registration going on in the senior center so that we will be able to automate the count process. When seniors come in, they will actually have an ID card, and they'll press a touchscreen and say which activities that they're going to. So, we will have very, a very accurate statistical profile of senior center usage, and we will be able to break down senior center usage by specific sort routines and specific targets. The lack of that kind of a process is one of the great deficiencies currently at the center.
So, if I'm hearing you right, analogous to the earlier conversation with planning, it's the paper map versus the GIS map kind of idea? So, right now, we have kind of the paper counts of who, we do have some records and some data that has been tracked.
Some records and some data. I would suggest to you that the records are probably outdated. I think that that's a fair statement. I think what the center needs to do is start the registration process anew, and that registration process will be computerized. And then we'll be able to accumulate that. At the present time, we don't even know how many members there are at the Fairfield Senior Center. So, there is no question that we need to put that kind of management system in place, and we're ready to do it. And we're looking for your support.
Just, this is more of a comment than a question. When I think about the, not just the senior center, but also social services, and I think about the community at large, I, it's often, we do things in discreet, silos almost, and when we look forward to this in terms of any feasibility or any plans going forward, I hope that we'll look outside of the box. And I think, for example, one of the things that seemed a little more outside of the box, the intergenerational comment that you made about a summer camp. That kind of thinking, whether it's related to programming or any renovations or building process, is something that I would encourage and support, that we look broadly as a community as we address the needs of our seniors. Because beyond our seniors having needs and, and that we need to support our seniors, we also have seniors who have tremendous gifts and assets to offer to the community. So, I hope that we approach it in, in both respects as we move forward.
If I might intercheck, Mr. Atwater, based on use of your donation account or the senior center donation account, and some alternative sources of funding, you're going ahead, you and Claire came in the other day, and you're going ahead with the acquisition of that computer system, I believe.
We are, but based on the email traffic, what, what we discovered is that the issue went to Mr. Leslie. He okayed it. Mr. Leslie referred it to someone with the name Twig. I don't know who that is.
That's Director of Purchasing.
And the Director of Purchasing referred it to Legal. So, there's where, that's where you are.
Okay. Very good. Just to clarify, one of the issues is that we don't know who the membership is. So, you have, first thing you have to do is build a database. Again, compliments to your team in terms of going out, doing an evaluation of what databases and computer software, hardware combinations are used by other centers to register, track folks as they come in and go out. And there's a program called myseniorcenter.com? Or myseniorcenter?
That's the website. The program is, a turnkey system is called myseniorcenter.
Which would allow for the registration of members, tracking who's using what activities, what time they're coming in, also tracking them in and out, and provide a way of developing that database. And, and Mr. Crowe, I know, and Kristin, I know, you know, all the things you do, once you had a database of your customers, we would be able to do.
It's also used for scheduling. It's used for room booking. It's used for room booking. It is used for bus route scheduling. It is used for monitoring food service, equipment costs and usage. Again, really, so well thought of, there's really not an aspect of senior center operation that this particular turnkey system doesn't deal with and deal with very effectively. And we're grateful for your support.
Did you have some more?
One more. Just in terms of, this is a separate committee from the Human Services Commission, and obviously there are members who participated. My assumption is that there's been conversation back and forth. I know you were there, I believe it was the 29th, was it, that meeting?
We made a presentation of the report to members of the Human Services Commission on that date, yes.
Okay.
As far as committee membership is concerned, we regard it as an independent committee of people that are interested in the senior center. We did have a couple of senior center employees contribute to the committee on their own time, one being Dave Peck, former police chief, the other being Margaret Andrews, who is currently the program coordinator at the senior center. So, we had a variety of people, but we look at ourselves as completely independent.
Thank you.
If I might, you referenced in here the survey, the Miller Brown survey. Now, I sat in on the presentation of that, and I don't know if my two colleagues have gotten a copy of that report or those slides. Is there something that you can get to us?
There's a summary of the Miller Brown survey.
There's a summary here, but there's a lot more detail.
In the report, and it's also repeated in the appendix in more detail. If you would like a copy of the Miller Brown presentation in PowerPoint, we can get that to you.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I think that would be, you guys, I think that paints a much more detailed picture than I think you both would find helpful.
Great.
Thank you for that. And again, there...
I think the chair has it.
Ms. Cohen? If you, because of your position as chair, you are more than just public.
I'm ready to walk without the case. My name is Selma Cohen. I live on Old Oaks Road here in Fairfield, 40 or 50 years' worth. I'm chairman of the Human Services Commission, and we received this identical report as well presented as clearly as effectively last Thursday, and the commission voted unanimously to support a strong request, and we submitted a letter to Mr. Tetra and its selectmen.
Thank all three of us.
To, for the fiscal '13, '14 year, two full-time people for the seniors. One, a full-time Director of Human Services, and the second one, a distinctly different person, a full-time Director for the Fairfield Senior Center. This committee was amazing in their effort, in their body of work, in their spirit, and I think it vitalized the Human Services Commission in making us feel that there was something behind us and that we can not just stand here like this, but have people behind us that believe in that place and want it to be what Fairfield should have. So, we're hoping very, very strongly that in the 2013, '14 upcoming budget, that there be these two separate full-time positions in some way. The difference in cost, and I think maybe I'm overstepping, but maybe this is what goes before Board of Finance, but the difference between what we would normally be having, as in the current year, and the difference if we have these two separate distinct full-time positions is $115,719. And I know money is very tight, and it's difficult to budget, but to make this process continue in its small way, I mean, it's a small way, but those people, carefully chosen and well-trained, interested, and bring a professionalism to it, will put us on the map. We don't want this work to become history without something concrete happening to the credit of Fairfield and to the credit of the people that have spent hours and hours of hard work. They were amazing. Thank you.
Now, this work is pretty impressive. One question, has the Senior Tax Relief Committee from the RTM contacted the Human Services Commission? And has your commission had a presentation or report from them?
I don't think so. I see it on television when it's played, when they had the RTM discussion.
All right. I'll bring that up with Mr. McCarthy. I'd also encourage you to reach out to him and have an update before your commission. One of the things, sooner or later, comes down to money in a lot of these things. And so, my question was going to be, their commission is currently proposing $1 million to $2 million in additional tax relief for seniors, which is a very...
Don Leslie is, and with the legal woman voters, Tom Flynn, we're going to do a seminar at the center in February, and he's going to discuss all the new proposals. Not Don Leslie, Don, that the tax assessment.
Yeah. It's, yeah. If I could, what I'm talking about is, right now, the RTM is considering in essence providing $2 million to our seniors.
Through the tax?
Through tax.
Tax abatement.
So, I would be very interested to know, in terms of priority, what your commission thinks in terms of, should the money be spent on the senior center initially as a priority or on tax relief?
We're looking for $115,000 now.
Yep. I think it's important...
Sink that out of the $2 million.
It's, and potentially, but I think that you need to have your commission hear about, I think it's very important that your commission is knowledgeable about what the town is doing from, and in this case, the RTM is proposing in terms of additional senior tax relief.
That was carried over for the next month, their vote?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Yes. But you want, okay, you definitely want to get up to speed on that, because part of what we're doing, when we look at this, because my next question would be, as we went out and visited other towns and looked at the senior centers, how does what they do for tax relief compare to what their investment is in the senior center?
I'm not there on that.
Tetra, I'm Nancy Legary. I'm on Mr. ...
Yeah. You need to speak from up here if you would.
My name is Nancy Legary. I live at 245 Uncle Road, number 47 in Fairfield. I've been a Fairfield resident since 1960, and I want to stay here, but I just want to, you know, I've been a member, I'm a member of this committee, and I'm also a member of the Human Services Commission. And I think your question, they're two separate items. I don't think that the tax relief has anything to do. Our commission was to look at the senior center and to see what the senior center needed and the top 10 priorities that we would find. I think the senior tax credit is a totally different issue. I don't think that has anything to do with our report at all. We were not given that mandate to look at that. Had that been given to us, that would have been a different thing. But I really don't understand where you're coming from on that.
One, I didn't ask the committee, because I understand your charge was to look at the top...
Okay.
I'm okay with that. You guys did a great job. Fabulous job. That was your charge. That's what you did.
Well, it just kind of like, just kind of like got me wondering here now.
What? What I asked is the Human Services Commission, since they're very involved with the senior center and seniors, if the RTM Committee on Senior Tax Relief had reached out to them?
They have not.
Well, I need, I need to hear that from the committee, but thank you.
Okay.
And the question then becomes, as the town is looking at priorities, what is the commission's view on that? So, I'm gonna, I'm, the commission, at this point. And I'd like to have them get up to speed on that and hear back. I'm raising the question. I'm not trying, I realize you have, since you, I realize you haven't looked at it, I'm not trying to get an answer today, but I think it's very important that you all weigh in on what the priorities for investments that the town should be. You're in the best position to see some of that. You're closer to the seniors as a group than anybody else in town. We need to hear from you on that. Does that, does that make sense in terms of?
You want both? Do you want all of it?
Understand.
You'll talk with that.
All right. And then if I might, in terms of, I know, I'm trying not to take public questions. If I could, for the folks that, I guess, Dr. DeAngelis, can I address this? Do you, did you all look at, when you looked at the budgets of the senior center, I know we looked at gross numbers, say, Milford's spending $3 million, Westport's spending $1 million or something and change. Do we have a breakout of what they spend their money on? Are those the same programs or different programs? Did we get any sample budgets from those towns by comparison, again, to help us look at how they're investing their money and how it's being spent?
I don't think we got, we got that kind of a breakdown by programs, Ron. I don't think, we had, yeah, we have salaries. We have salaries and positions that they have. But if you're talking about what goes into what program, different programming, that kind of thing, we didn't get that, no.
Yeah. Let's take something else, say, buses, bus transportation, how many people they provide bus transportation for.
We had some, we had some of those figures, yes, we had some of those figures.
And some of that might be helpful to us as we look at comparing our budget.
Right.
It's one thing to say that we're $300,000, they're $1 million. The question then becomes, percentage-wise, what are they spending it on that we're not? And folding that back into some of the priorities as we go through.
Okay. Okay. I think we can get, whatever figures we have, we can put together on the buses and those kinds of services.
Okay.
But largely, it was salaries. Wallingford has 14 paid personnel, six of them full-time and eight of them part-time. We have one full-time secretary and one clerk at part-time, and Claire is half-time. They do raise more money, and one of the things we've discussed, and our committee has discussed, and I presented this up, I'm currently also sitting as president of the Fairfield Senior Citizens Association, and I've addressed the last two meetings to fundraising, which is part of our charge, which is really our charge. And we believe, one of the recommendations is, if we can open up in the evening and in Saturdays, we can do what other senior centers are doing. They use those, they use those times largely to accomplish some fundraising. We have requests to teach computer courses from people who say they could improve their job or get another job if they, if they could do PowerPoint or they could, or they could do Excel or something. And if we ran classes in the evening, we could help to generate money that would help run the senior center and fund some of those programs. What we really need is the personnel, the staff to oversee this and...
As you looked at the sources of funding, any breakouts or any comparison in terms of how much was done by tax dollars versus grants versus other sources? Because I've heard there are lots of grants out there, and I was just wondering if that was what you observed.
Some of that, I believe Wallingford has some grants, but largely, it's, largely, it's tax dollars and it's the funds that they raise. Westport has friends of the senior center, which, in addition to some of the money they raise, makes additional gifts, grants to them. So, they'll give them $15,000 to run a speakers program.
Do we, do we have any data on that from the other communities?
We can get that. We have some of it, but I think we can get that.
Okay. Perhaps we can talk a little further offline to kind of define that.
I think, I think that can be done.
And do we have, I know we don't know how many member counts.
Who are we, the member thing is, we don't have a membership fee. We don't have, many centers do have. We just, Fairfield never insulated, initiated a membership fee. However, we do have monthly reports.
When you talk a fee, what range are you looking, is that, is that a nominal fee?
Most of them have a $10, it's a nominal fee. Many of them have a $10 fee, and then a couple of them say that they know their people well, and if they really find somebody can't afford the annual $10 fee, they give them a wave. But we do have monthly reports, and we are, we ask all activities coordinators to make monthly reports, and there are monthly reports. Now, some of them aren't always accurate because they're guestimates, but we know on any given day, you probably have 30 or 40, maybe 60, on some days, people in the exercise class. You can walk in almost any morning and afternoon and find 15 or 20 people in the pool room. So, those kinds of things we know go on. There's always 35, 40 people for lunch. So, there are those kinds of guestimates that come together and are put together in reports.
Now, some of the communities we talked to, some of the other senior centers are using that either My Senior Center or another type of database program.
Yeah. Couple of them are using my, I think three of them are using My Senior Center, and others have a, well, some of them have a receptionist, and they have a sign-in system. So, they track their people. They have a full-time receptionist who sits at a desk and welcomes people, and they sign in and...
Where I was trying to get to is that, as we look at kind of the budget going up, is there any way to take a look at where the other budgets, other towns or other senior centers are spending their money? And how many participants are in those programs? Like, which ones are they finding are most attractive, and which ones get the most participation as a way of kind of, again, helping us set priorities in terms of what to do first?
We can probably get some of that information from those that have the My Senior Center system, because they could, they would have, you know, that system generates monthly reports on how many people do this and that.
That would help us look at usage. Also help us look at if we open things up at night, what things might be most attractive at night versus weekends?
Yeah. I think, I think that kind of data would let us know, but we have a pretty good indication now of what kinds of things we would offer at night to start with. And I mean, we wouldn't necessarily have a night exercise class, but it might, if younger seniors wanted one, see, the important thing is, if we were open at night, we could put an ad in the paper if we had a budget, and then we could say, we're going to be open on Tuesday night, and we can ask people what kinds of things, come in and what kinds of things I'd like to call in an open house meeting and see what people would like to have. It's just that we haven't had the budget to do that kind of avatar. I mean, I almost fell over when I found out that a little small ad in the newspaper was $400.
But we did do the survey, and that went out to about 6,000 people.
That gives us some indication. That gives us some indication.
Now, that was sent out to folks primarily between 65 and 70.
Yeah.
It didn't address the people 75 or older. Now, and it was, it's my understanding that the current use of the senior center is primarily 75 or older.
It is probably, yes, yes. Yes, and we'd like to, we'd like to bring, introduce younger seniors to the center. That's one of them, because they're the ones who are, in the future, are going to shape what senior centers have. And more, and these other senior centers that have the evening hours, they do get younger people for those things.
Now, of the 6,000 we sent out, I think, if I remember correctly, we got over 900 back?
Yeah, I think it was over 900.
Right, which is, which is an excellent response, an excellent return from a survey standpoint. So, that says there's a certain amount of validity to the data and the results that come with that.
I think so, yeah. I think so.
All right, good. Any other questions here?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Atwater, thank you. Claire, thank you very much. Next item up is the Not-for-Profit Committee Report. This will be given by our own Kristin McCarthy-Weigh, who doubles as the board of selection representative on the Not-for-Profit Committee.
Do you want to go to the podium?
If you like.
Do that.
Yeah, why not?
Yes.
Make each one.
Yeah, just to clarify, we normally don't allow, it's our custom not to allow public comment on an item that we're not voting on. So, this is a report and presentation to the board. Yes. We had a, we had a presentation from that, unless, Mr. DeAngelis, or Dr. DeAngelis, excuse me, would you care to have those comments included in your presentation? Okay. All right, thank you. Then, moving on.
Okay.
Welcome.
Good evening. The Not-for-Profit Committee, as you can see, was made up of one representative from the Board of Selectmen, myself, two from the Board of Finance, and two from the RTM. I want to thank the members who served, particularly Krista with the chairman, and I'm here in his place tonight, so.
No, I want to be sure of your last step.
We, I have the utmost respect for the group who just left, because we did a much more mini version of reaching out to some of the other communities, both through the finance departments, through senior leadership, and some department heads, including emails, phone conversations, and some in-person visits. And after using some of the data that we had gathered, we talked extensively in conjunction with some of the nonprofits who are also participating. So, I'd like to thank, in particular, the Pilot House and Pequot Library. We also had some folks from Operation Hope. The Pilot House folks actually were there and provided a lot of helpful information as we went through. You can see that there are two levels of recommendations, and just to be clear, the Tier One recommendations, as we've called them, are essentially those that the group has agreed on. We've voted on throughout the process and have come to consensus that these are what we would recommend at this point. Tier Two is really waiting for further conversation. So, while we have some recommendations, and I'll briefly touch on... So while we have some recommendations, and I'll briefly touch on those, at this point, it's clear that we need to hear more from the Board of Selectmen, specifically the First Selectmen, before the group goes forward. So Tier One, the recommendations really are trying to bring together some of the best practices that we think can happen more immediately. The first one being that the Budget Director requires an application from nonprofit entities applying for funds for the current budget. And it's my understanding that there is, there has been a process that has been put into place for this year for those agencies who have previously been funded by the town, and feel free to jump in, Mr. Tetrow.
I believe there's a revised application process, and we're asking anybody who either has or previously or is interested in being newly included in our budget to fill out the revised paperwork and get that into our finance department.
Okay. And we had laid out, as you can see on this, on the presentation slide, the IRS termination letter, proof of application for nonprofit status. There was a suggestion at the Board of Finance for some additional clarifying documentation, just confirming that, a listing of current board members, a copy of the latest financial statement if audited revenues exceed 500,000. And the completed budget packet would essentially be what the Budget Director felt was important information to have. So we were not trying to recommend, here's what Mrs. Gardner should put forth, but that there should be something a little more substantial, which is happening now.
Can I ask a question on that point? Is this first box is kind of like unprocessed, which is where you're going through?
Yeah.
I think you just touched on my question, which is, there is not a template that's been devised and given to finance to distribute to potential nonprofits? It's been, maybe you can better explain that to me.
We, through talking with some of the other communities, did recommend a proposed kind of one-page sheet, again, with the thought that the First Selectmen and the Budget Director would make use of that as they self-fit and adjust and modify that. It's a pretty, again, it was one-page, and I apologize, I don't have a copy of that here, but I can get that to you, and certainly it would be more appropriate to get what Mrs. Gardner ended up deciding to use.
Yeah, so...
So it was based on comments, and specifically, though, review of what other communities have used and seemingly effectively.
Okay.
So, again, brief.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, and a comment that you just made, Mr. Tetrow, that at this point in time, the committee's recommendation related to that application process, if you will, was to send that out to those organizations that are currently being funded, rather than a broader outreach. And particularly because we've been in conversation regarding a change in this process, the current practice as it stands is that the First Selectmen's office is, you know, you set the budget, you put the budget before us. So just to be clear, that that was a conversation at the committee level, that the recommendation in this first slide was for the agencies already being funded by the town, or previously having received funding from the town. The second slide, that the town invests in nonprofit entities partnering with the town. And though this may seem to be a subtle shift, we did spend a significant amount of time talking about that, that we kind of shift our focus from the idea of charitable contribution to an investment in resources that support our town goals and objectives, that support the needs of the town, that we have clearly identified as priorities for the town. To go along with that, that the goals and objectives would be explicit, that we would be clear that, for example, I'll pick on the Board of Education and suggest...
The International Board.
Yeah, there you go. That the Audubon, for example, which is part of the science curriculum, that that's a goal and objective, and that that would be something that might support clear goals and objectives that we have as a town. So rather than an organization coming to us to have us help them to advance their goals and objectives, we are seeking to invest in organizations who will help us and partner with us to advance the town's priorities and goals and objectives. That's the reasoning behind that.
Could I ask one question? Would a potential example of that be like, say, the Audubon presenting a science or nature-related program that is something that the school needs to do, wants to do, may or may not be required to do, but let's say they want to do it, but because the Audubon Society is doing it on our behalf or their behalf, you know, there's actual economic benefit to the Board of Education that they can, you know, show us, that is beyond just the goals and objectives of the program, but we could show some savings on the Board of Ed side because it's something that they're not having to do or fund themselves? Things like that?
Yes, quite possibly. And there, that, so the economic benefit piece could be one. It also could be something that we have a priority or is a goal and objective of the town, and beyond economics, logistics, or something else that would preclude us from doing that in an efficient manner, that we found that there was an agency that can do that more effectively. So economics may be a driving factor, and likely is in many cases, or there could be other reasons as well.
Right, it may not have to be, but it could very well be as part of that partnership concept.
Exactly, yes, exactly. In terms of the next slide, right now, in our miscellaneous category, and when we go through the budget process, it's, I'll use the word hodgepodge. What we recommend for this is to, within miscellaneous, create subsections, and categories could include the state statute compliance. We often get into the whole mandated discussion at the time of the budget, so by having the categories that could include things like state statute compliance, social services, education, and culture, that each of the agencies would be included underneath those, and it would help the process move a little bit more smoothly, and clearly state those that were based on state statute as their own unique situation. And furthermore, in this recommendation, that each of these categories would have a person or a body who would appropriately understand that to recommend and review the applications, and that could be, you know, as simple or as complex as the administration desired. That kind of leads into the Tier Two recommendations. The thought being that if we are going to invest, that we want to make sure that we're getting a good return on our investment, that we're monitoring our investment, much as we do with, you know, our pension, for example. So that the town would designate a person, a group, or possibly create a new group, and this is, again, not something we have come to consensus on, not something we're prepared to recommend without more feedback, but who would look at outcome measurements to see that, sure enough, Pequot Library is letting people in the town check out books. I'm using a very, you know, broad example there, and are providing the kind of programming that we're looking for. And then the second piece of that is, again, the goals and objectives piece. I think the more we talked about it, that, back to that Tier One recommendation of shifting into that investment philosophy, we're going to invest to meet certain benchmarks and certain goals and objectives. So we want to be clear about what those are and why we're investing and what we're investing in. I think the hope going forward would be that the conversation could continue, but very clearly need to understand, and I think I have recommended to the chair, that he meet with the First Selectmen and just touch base with him about what's realistic at this point from an administrative standpoint, and does it make sense for this committee to continue the conversation, to look more at that Tier Two recommendation that's in that particular slide, and does it make sense to continue the conversation in this way? And I think the Board of Finance has heard the presentation, and I think coming here, it allows us to get some feedback from the Board of Selectmen about, does it make sense to have this group go forward? I think you can imagine my bias on that, I think it does. I will, just as a single member and kind of shifting hats, rather than presenting now for the group, though, I shouldn't say that, the group definitely would like to continue, and I think it makes sense to further refine the next piece, but I think we need to hear from the First Selectmen if that makes sense, again, from an administrative standpoint. Because there is ideal, and then there's, you know, practical reality. And we know that in order to monitor some of these, that takes time, it takes people, it takes resources, it takes money, potentially. You could have a volunteer group there. I won't get into all that, because that's, again, the next level, we can talk more about that, so. Other questions?
Go ahead, if I can start. I guess two things, one is, it sounds like there's a recommendation to, or request that we charge the committee with moving forward, to further look at the Tier Two recommendations. And then second, and I guess this is for discussion among us, it would seem to me that it would be great to hear what other towns have kind of broken some of these, or organized these investment categories into. And I think it would be great to have a discussion group or a discussion session among the three of us, and to talk about how we'd like to see it, and do that with, looking at last year's investments, and saying, okay, how would we organize these, how would we look at this? So that, I'm concerned at this late date, given the other things on our plate, to do a real strategic here, objectives type of thing, might be difficult, but I would think that we could at least learn from other towns, have a discussion, organize them, we want to see them. So as we go through this budget process, we're getting a cycle of learning and looking at them through those eyes. And then perhaps look at next year as improving on that, if we, you know, or enhancing that view in that organization.
Well, the, in that slide that has the actual headings, those proposed categories were the fruit of much discussion, believe it or not.
I'm sure they were.
And also from going to some of the other communities. And using those, the nomenclature, state statute compliance, social services, education, and culture, were the actual categories that the group felt captured what we have been doing. And certainly, we are very clear that we are recommending groups, so that was the recommendation, because, you know, and there were a few you could say could fall into dual categories, they would have to, a primary category would have to be chosen. So those were actually the recommended categories. We, I think at one point had talked about, could they just be moved out of miscellaneous? And it was explained to us by the Budget Director, they actually need to stay within miscellaneous. I can't remember the exact reasoning why on that, but that that's why it was recommended as subcategories under the miscellaneous section.
Maybe one of the less flexible components of the unit system.
Yes.
It requires that it be in some, in the account numbers that they're set up, which includes a department number probably.
That's my guess as well. But back to Mr. Tetrow's question, if we would, like some of the, is it possible for us to get some of the exhibits or some of the data that you gathered, or that the committee gathered from some of the surrounding towns, finance directors, or managers that you guys interviewed to gather some of the information? That drove a lot of your work and your thinking and your recommendations.
Certainly is. I think a lot of the data that we gathered is more just informal report write-ups. Frankly, Mr. DeWitt and I were the primary folks who were having the conversation, so there was a lot of email back and forth. If you can kind of help me clarify what you're looking for, then I could probably better get you...
Take it offline, I'm just kind of looking for some of the thought and the data that went into the Phase One conclusions, you know, for instance, you know, what are other towns specifically doing as part of their process?
Right.
You know, like kind of a compare and contrast chart, if there is such a thing that you could put together.
Fleshing it out a little bit more.
Yeah, a little bit more.
So you could hear a little more about some of the towns who I called, who said, when you figure this out, call me back and tell me, that's awesome, you know?
That's not a good call.
Literally. Versus, I went down to Greenwich and met with the Department of Social Service Director, who has an employee who is hired...
To run this process.
Half-time to three-quarters time of that person's time is spent simply working with the funding of nonprofit agencies and investing in those partner agencies, and monitoring outcomes and working with them. So we had some real extremes, and what we did was try and take the pieces of those and make it realistic for us. So yes, I definitely, I'd be happy to talk with you, or share some.
We're not getting into weeds too much on it, right? And the other question I had to touch is on Mr. Tetrow's point a few minutes ago about where we are in the current year, which is almost January, and how we're entering into our budget season. Because some of these Phase One recommendations, because if it's, if the report is recommending that we implement some of these Phase One recommendations for the 13, 14 year, then that means that's work we're going to be getting into pretty quickly here, February, March, April, right? So while I think the purpose of the committee to help outline and define a process and continuing their work makes a lot of sense, so that we can be more, you know, consistent in what we do and how we do it, I think all that makes perfect sense. And I think looking at those things, short-term, makes sense, because I don't sense that there's anything in that process, even though I haven't seen the template, but my gut tells me there's nothing in that template right now that's throwing any of our current nonprofits overboard.
That's not the intention in any way, yes.
I'm not suggesting it is, but...
You're right.
But my concern is that we don't go beyond that in the short term. You know, if we're looking at making changes to the process, being inclusive of everyone that we're currently funding, then that's something that I could find myself in support of. If it's beyond that, then I would have difficulty getting supportive of it, because, you know, it's almost January, and if somebody's counting on a contribution from the town in Fairfield for the 13, 14 year. So I guess my question is, in a roundabout way, are the recommendations for the 13, 14 year more on the process side and not on the purpose side, if I will?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, they're, to be very clear, this group is aware that any transition or change in substantive change in the process requiring, I would call, maybe a competitive application, would, needs to be done over time and in a thoughtful way. There was in no way any interest in trying to put the nonprofits who we have in the past funded in jeopardy, knowing, as we talked throughout, and as you well know, that ultimately that funding is determined by the funding bodies, our body, the Board of Finance, and ultimately the RTM makes that final decision. This, there are really two action items here in this Tier One proposal. The middle side is really more about a change in philosophy. The goals and objectives piece was, there was no intent that that be a lengthy drawn-out process, more to simply say, Audubon, Board of Ed, Part of Frick, I'm using them as an example again. With that first recommendation, I believe that, I believe that this is, this piece has already been asked. For example, I know from talking with the Pilot House, that they submitted paperwork, and they actually submitted all of this paperwork, when asked, when sent the email by Linda, Mrs. Gardner.
Right.
And then the second piece, the action request is, or recommendation, it's really a recommendation, not a request, the categories. And, you know, it may be that we are, you know, far along, I, again, I'd have to defer to Mrs. Gardner to know exactly what has happened thus far.
I think if we just break it down, I think if you look at the first box of Tier One recommendations, the process piece, it sounds like we're on the same page. It sounds like we're saying the same things, and more than likely, moderate changes to the process, the application process, but more than likely not any changes to the outcome of who's included in the budget or who's not.
That's, that is the, that's the intent.
That's my reading of it.
Yes.
But when I read box two, which is still part of the recommendation level one, it does talk about, you know, a fundamental shift in, from charitable contribution to partnering, which may or may not be a wrong idea, I'm not suggesting that, but it could, if tier one recommendations were embraced and voted on or accepted for the current upcoming budget season, I could see where some of the language in that box could lead the reader or potentially a person viewing one of these agencies, well, we're making a shift, a fundamental shift, whether it's slight or strong, from charitable to partnering and you really ought to partner. So it does, I am concerned a little bit that there's language there that might be a little bit beyond what you and I seem to have an agreement here, a meeting of the minds on, that could be read that way. And I just want to get that out there in the public, because there's been some scuttlebutt out there in the public already. And I know it's unfair, and I know it's potentially and hopefully inaccurate, but, you know, there was a budget heating, a budget meeting for the Pequot Library a few weeks ago on a Sunday, and it was, I was unable to be there, but there was some, you know, conversation about their budget being potentially in jeopardy as soon as this year due to something going on. Without any more detail or knowledge about it than that, that conversation alone is troubling, because I don't think, well, I know it's something I would never support, because, I mean, the Pequot Library is very important to our town and the Pequot Library needs our support. So to me, that's a very simple concept. But if people are concerned, whether it's accurate or inaccurate, I think we find, we need to find a way to make sure that everyone who's involved in the process understands that that is not the case, so that people, you know, aren't fearful of a new process.
Here, we are-
Do you know what I'm trying to say?
We are recommending a new process. And, and let me just address what you're saying on a couple of levels. One is that we talked specifically about the agencies that are currently funded, and that suggesting the shift is more about how we think and talk about it. Again, the decision does not rest in anyone but the funding body, so I hear what you're saying, which is that by using this language, we could encourage certain behaviors or certain choices, or we may be suggesting that. Let me be clear, this group has, throughout its conversation, recognized that this is a transitional, if the town decides to move in this direction, that this is a transitional process, and that none of, my understanding of our committee, none of the members want to put those agencies who we have been supporting in jeopardy during this transitional time. Recognizing that we have been given this charge, in part because we're looking at how we as a town prioritize and invest funds, and that those are some of the conversations, rather than happening here at our table during the budget season at the Board of Finance, and again, at the RTM, that we look at a process that allows for some of that vetting, potentially. That's tier two. I hear, I think what you're saying is, your concern is that the tier one recommendation language could inadvertently perhaps put some of the nonprofit funding that we currently-
Support.
-in the past, that we have supported, that we could put that in jeopardy.
Or foster conversations around that prematurely.
Yep. And I think, again, it's out there already. So there are, you're right, there are conversations that are happening, and I have had direct conversations with some of the nonprofits who have those concerns.
Okay.
Again, what I have emphasized to them is that, like, this is me personally, not as the committee. I do think that shifting to an investment based on these are the goals of our town, and then we can have a conversation about Pequot Library, about every, any, or-
Any.
-any agency. But that we're clear that these are our priorities. I also want to be clear that I don't support us cutting out the feet from the nonprofits who we've been funding. I think particularly in this year, and I think you've heard me every year at the Board of Finance and in the past, and the RTM, supporting the nonprofit funding as someone voting on those. And I think this year in particular, as a member of this committee, I would support that we let this process unfold, that we allow that to happen, and not through some interpretation, think that the committee is somehow giving a message that we're saying, no, you know?
No, thank you for that, and I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
No, that's-
You're, you're the only committee member here to answer my questions, and I just-
Put on the spot.
Put on the spot?
I'm on the spot, I'm fine, I-
I certainly appreciate your answers and all your work on the committee, and, you know, I just needed some clarification around that, just to get comfortable.
And I think it's a fair point that you raised. I think it's naming the elephant in the room. All this, any change is going to create anxiety, and, and well it should, because what we understand from the conversation of the town bodies is there have been a lot of questions. And I think part of the reason behind this group is to be able to come up with a solid process that will help us to address some of those questions.
Thank you very much.
All right, just to, given where we are, if I can please jump ahead to process stuff. That's, one, if it's, it's certainly okay with me, and as long as it's consensus of the group, that I'll get back to Mr. DeWitt, Chair, and say, please continue on with your work on the-
Yeah, that seems reasonable, right? There's a lot to do still, it looks like, right? Sorry.
If that's an okay process to follow, to get that done.
May I? I, I would say yes, and I would hope that before that group moves forward at all, that the Chair and you have a chance to sit down together as well.
Yeah. So that's kind of step one. Step two is, for this year, if I can kind of summarize both your comments into some sort of framework for the-
Please.
-for our current budget, is that let's go back and use those three categories, let's go back and organize our current investments in those categories-
Mm-hmm.
-and see how it looks. We've got the paperwork, so we'll be able to have that, if we need to look at that as part of the process, so we'll be able to look at the paperwork, the applications submitted, we'll be able to look at the current investments recommended in these categories and kind of use that as a run-through to see what we learned, and that would, I think, then this body, this board, perhaps has a strategic session, perhaps maybe just a one-item special meeting, but perhaps as part of one of our regular meetings, in maybe the summer?
Spring, yeah, like after budget.
Okay, after, I was thinking summer after budget, but we're both after budget, so that's okay.
Yep.
And then talk through this, so we have time to look at the process for the next year in plenty of time.
Yeah.
Does that sound?
I think that's very reasonable.
And I think that gives a concrete or discrete window of time when that group would work and-
So Jen, if we could make a note that this group needs to schedule a special meeting, we need to schedule it in June, but it might be held in July or August, based on schedules?
Sure.
To talk about the strategic things to the nonprofits, so define the categories based on what we learned out of this budget here.
Yeah. In plenty of time, and if we make some, if there are some global changes, people will know about them in-
Exactly.
-September, October versus maybe February.
Right, exactly, definitely. Let me just clarify what you're looking for, and I, actually, I'll probably have the Chair contact you with some more background information on the comparison to the other communities.
Like, if I just look at the, what box was it? The, the level one recommendations about, you know, even, you know, the application process as an example, what are other towns doing? Do they all have a process? Did we borrow a piece from there?
Right.
Or is somebody else doing this better? Just some of the information that you might have gleaned from talking to other people, because you spend a lot of time talking to other budget directors and, and other towns and other agencies, it would be nice to know a little more detailed what, what their thoughts are, what's working for them, what's not working for them.
Yep, will do. All right.
Thank you very much.
Am I off the spot now?
You're off the spot.
Back to the other spot?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And special thanks to you for saying.
Yes.
My pleasure.
Next up, tax collector, may I have a motion to accept, approve the refunds?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
To hear, consider and act on any communications, with your permission, I will just take a moment to point out that the FEMA deadline for registering for any grants is December 31st, and anybody in town that had property damage needs to, to make sure they register by December 31st, January 1st is too late. Second, the SBA disaster loan program. SBA stands for Small Business Administration, but it really is all about disaster loan for residences and businesses. Both FEMA and the SBA's disaster loan program have offices set up in our senior center here in town. Both have a December 31st deadline, so you need to register for your SBA disaster loan if you are looking at one. You don't have to take the money, you can only take part of the money, you can take all the money, but you've got to register by December 31st, otherwise it's not available on January 1st to you. So just reaching out to everybody out there to make sure that you or your neighbors, if there's any damage during the storm, that if, if it's possible for FEMA grants or possible for a disaster loan, that you reach out to the groups. And again, they do have offices set up at our senior center on Mono Terrace, and so please get that done by December 31st. No new business come before this board. So with that, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, thank you.
Thank you. Good meeting.